Enter the republic for which it stands, one nation unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing in honor of the servicemen and women who have serviced and continue to serve us both here and abroad. Thank you. Clerk will call the roll, please.
Counselor Anderson.
Yeah.
Crowe.
Yeah.
Dark Angelo. Lucy. Kenan.
Yeah.
Matheson.
Yeah.
Murphy. Nestor. Spatafora. Altrino. Bucci.
Here.
The minutes of the council meeting of October 2nd and October 9th.
On Counselor Matheson's motion to approve, all in favor. Opposed? Next order of business.
Dear members of the council pursuant to the provisions of law, I hereby designate Tanya Hanell, Home Program Director of the Malden Redevelopment Authority, as ADA Community Outreach Coordinator in Compliance with the Americans with Disability Act and State of Federal Fair Housing Laws for the City of Malden. Very truly yours, Gary Christiansen, Mayor. Confirmation is not required.
On Counselor Lucy's motion to place on file, all in favor. Opposed? Next order of business.
Be hereby ordained that Section 1.7 of the revised ordinances of 1991 be amended relative to annual reports. Counselor Dark Angelo.
Counselor Dark Angelo for the paper.
Thank you, Madam President. This is in regards to the annual report provision, which I'm encouraged that we've heard signals from the administration that they're going to start doing. The current ordinance, though, doesn't really have a provision for if the reports don't get done. This would put in a little bit of guidance for the administration to do that. So I'd recommend we move this paper forward.
On Counselor Dark Angelo's motion to move to ordinance, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Next order of business.
Be hereby ordained that Section 2.10 of the revised ordinances of 1991 be amended relative to commencement of litigation by the city solicitor. Counselor Matheson.
On Counselor Matheson for the paper.
Yes, this is merely to ask the city solicitor to come to us every two weeks after a committee of the whole to give us a rundown of the litigation that the city has engaged in prior to a filing of lawsuit. I think this is valuable because something came up in Ward III where a resident was a subject of a suit, and I wasn't made aware of that. I think it would help us to be more well-informed and communicate with one another. I spoke with the city solicitor. She's in favor of this. So we can move this over to ordinance. Thanks.
On Counselor Matheson's motion to move to ordinance, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Next order of business.
Amendment, be hereby ordained that Chapter 12 of the revised ordinances of 1991 be amended to add use regulations, dimensional controls, and parking requirements for medical marijuana treatment centers. Counselors Nestor and Murphy.
On Counselor Nestor's motion, I'm sorry, Counselor Nestor for the paper.
Thank you, Madam President. There's a question on the ballot about legalizing medical marijuana. And right now on our books, we don't have anything to restrict where they can go, or the council or the city doesn't have much say in where they could go. So what this paper would do, much like we did with the substance abuse centers, would be limited in certain areas. They could go, and then every single one of them would have to come before the city for a special permit. So I'd like to move this to ordinance for further discussion.
On Counselor Nestor's motion to move to ordinance and planning, all in favor. Opposed? Next order of business.
Be ordained that Section 2.1 of the revised ordinances of 1991 be amended relative to drug testing of, random drug testing of certain city officials. Counselor Dark Angelo.
Well, first, what was that?
What was that tremor?
That was a tremor. Yeah, really weird. I'm sorry I lost my place.
Well, if we want to continue, it's Counselor Dark Angelo.
Counselor Dark Angelo for the paper. Sorry.
Thank you, Madam President. This is going along with some of the behind-the-scenes stuff we're doing for the treasurer and to make sure that the appropriate controls may be in place at such time that we hire that particular individual. And I ask that we just move it along and refine this paper.
On Counselor Dark Angelo's motion to move to ordinance, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Next order of business.
Order that Rule 39 of the Rules and Orders of the Malden City Council be amended by striking out the words "Ordinance Committee" and inserting in place throughout the words "Compliance Appointments Committee." Counselor Bucci.
Thank you. This particular paper that's before us is more of what I would always term a housekeeping effort and exercise. Back in February 2011, we had unanimously created, or amended actually, this particular ordinance with the creation of 46.01, which is our standing committees. And in doing so, we had changed the language in Rule Number 39. So my request tonight is that we pretty much do something that we should have done a while back, and it's been an oversight for some time now. But clearly, it should be corrected. So tonight, my understanding is, is that we can't change or amend the same night. So the request would be to move the change, but the change would have to be delayed for a week. I see a couple lights. Counselor Kenan.
I might not have been paying attention as closely as I should have, but what is this going to do?
I'm sorry?
What is this?
What this request is, is to amend Rule 39, which currently is incorrect. Rule 39 had been changed February 2011 to reflect the addition of a new committee of the city council. And in doing so, it moved a function over to that standing committee on appointments. Rule 39 reflects the language that it includes the appointments. We need to address that and remove, we should have amended it at the time that we created the other committee. Make sense? Karen?
Well, I guess it can be debated in committee then, right? This is going to committee, or are we doing this right here?
Well, it can't do, no, you can't do it tonight.
Okay.
So the idea would be to have this brought back next week, or, you know, whatever everyone's pleasure is, but I have other lights.
Yeah, it's going to ordinance, right? No?
My preference were to table it. It's a housekeeping issue that, sorry? That would be my request. Can I make that as a president? I don't think so.
And so what would the effect of this be?
It is just clearing up the language that should have been removed in February 2011, which would, do we have a copy of that? Who has the council book? I don't have it verbatim. I don't want it to be incorrect.
Okay, so there's 46.01.
No, 49.
You want this one?
That's the one you're correcting.
That's the one you're correcting, that you're creating.
46.01, which is the.
This is the old copy of the rules.
This is the old one. This is 2009. Anyone? Peg? Peg, you have the marker.
Okay, so there's 39. And 46.01.
So what we should have done in 2011 is change the language. In 39, it says that this, appointments in elections generally, it refers it to ordinance. But in February 2011, we had designed a new appointment committee, and that is under 46.01, I'm looking for. That says that the Compliance Appointments Committee, the Compliance Appointments Committee shall have jurisdiction over the activities of the Compliance Bureau, shall recommend candidates to fill vacancy to all city offices, including the mayoral appointments, to be confirmed by the city council, and all positions over which the city council has appointment authority. So it's just a housekeeping change that needs to be, this was certainly brought to our attention over the last couple of weeks, that we had not made the correction.
Yeah, I remember when this paper came up, and I'm not so sure that what you're saying is correct. And in fact, that committee, as I recall, was set up because we have such a large amount of almost rubber stamp appointments coming down, that that was set up to handle those, not the, not the special appointments that come up once in a while that the city council would have, like the city solicitor, like the treasurer, like the controller. And in fact, when we had the controller, we didn't send it into, what's the name of that committee again? I'm sorry.
It is the Compliance Appointments Committee.
Yeah, that's just the committee which has, you know, I got 10 people for the Arts Council. Come on down. We look at them and do that. I don't think anybody had in mind of taking the other authority away from the other committees. Just my recollection. Thank you.
And just a point of information, it was a unanimous vote that I can recall, and I think that it was, I think I recall a familiar set of circumstances, but appointments are appointments, in my, just my personal opinion. And it is an established committee comprised of different people each session. But in any event, I have other lights. I want to say, Counselor Lucy.
Thank you, Madam President. Because we can't take action on this, I would move to table this for a week.
Okay. Do we have a?
Second.
Second. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry, it'll be, did you want to speak? Oh, okay. So it'll be tabled till next week? Next order of business?
Order that the committee of the whole meet with the city solicitor and Human Resource Director to establish policies and procedures for hiring a treasurer. Counselor Bucci.
Thank you. The purpose and premise behind this item on the docket this evening is to make a recommendation, as well as propose to my fellow colleagues, that over the, and the upcoming meeting, which is our committee of the whole, would be an ideal time to meet with our city solicitor, Human Resource Director, and actually look at the opportunity that we could have to, as a body of 11 people, actually discuss the importance of defining and designing a set of standards and guidelines relevant to the exercise of us hiring a treasurer for the city. Over the last few weeks, certainly from my seat and from what I deem to be my responsibility in this seat, is the, I've listened intensely, as most folks have as well, to the many ideas and suggestions that have been placed out or electronically placed in terms of what should we, you know, what steps should we be taking and how those steps should be done. We've also recognized folks who have brought in a new lens to look at the process in which we've always operated on and certainly have the history that has operated very effectively, respectfully, and with integrity. But I do think it's an opportunity for us to look at those suggestions and apply them and take advantage of the 11 of us weighing in and engaging in a conversation about something of a significant, such a role having such significance. So clearly, it's, in my opinion, a benign request. It requires us to come here to the chamber, and instead of this information of planning, be subject to a committee or move from committee to committee, that the 11 of us have an opportunity to weigh in and hopefully develop, design a set of standards that would meet the needs and at least have a fair approach to having direct input. So that is the purpose of my request, for us to move forward and have such dialogue respectfully amongst each other. I see a light? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Nestor.
Thank you. Just wondering what this would do, what's the difference between what is now being set up? I know Counselor Lucy has, as the head of the committee, has set standards and guidelines, and we've talked to the Human Resource Director concerning, you know, parameters of job descriptions, things like that. I know we did it with the controller as well, the subcommittee did that. And I think Counselor Lucy, you had done that with one other search. I can't think of what it was prior to the controller. So not sure what difference this would be as opposed to what's already in there. My issue would be delaying the search for the treasurer, as 11 of us try to come up with some kind of parameters around it. I think would be a lengthy process as well. So what would be the difference between what the parameters that the committee now has in place for a search that 11 of us would look at differently?
To be really honest with you, I don't know what the difference would be. It would just give an opportunity for the entire group to have a discussion around the concerns and issues that they may have had or have had or are having with the either current or historical approach to defining those standards, or help us reconstruct those standards to, I guess, in a sense, dialogue with each other a little bit more directly as well. You know, as you know, this, we've had some things sitting committee for a couple of years as it was defined multiple, in terms of having it have multiple positions, whether we were reconstructing our charter and home rule petition, we were creating a CFO treasurer, which actually the process, I think that was an example of a process working in terms of it having an outcome that was at one point favorable. And for us, it was changed in an unplanned way that led us now into this model of searching for the treasurer. I don't know if there specifically what improvements could be made, Counselor Nestor, but I'd like to think that we're listening to our colleagues wanting something different. And this was just an opportunity to have that dialogue. For me, it doesn't, I don't see the purpose of moving it from one committee to another. These, it isn't about the composition of a committee. It's about just getting to the work and making sure that we've explored all of our avenues. But I think doing it collectively together may have a lot more effective change. But this is just, like I said, it's just my opinion on this.
I respectfully disagree with that, because we have these committees. They're working. My next paper is not meant as any kind of slight to Counselor Lucy's committee and the work that that committee's done. I think they've done an excellent job. I just think we need a fresh set of eyes, as you would if you were hiring a headhunter to find a job in your own personal company. So I hope no one is taking that as any type of slight or disrespect. It's just I think we need a fresh set of eyes. The committee as a whole, or the every 11 members of this council, is more than welcome to sit in on these search process and discuss it with that committee at any particular time. So I think voices are heard, and every opportunity is to hear those. So my concern is, again, delaying the treasurer search. I have no faith in the consultants we have down there now. And I think this body took a vote to remove them, and I supported that. So I think this, I think this would have the adverse effect of delaying the search even more, which I don't think we can do, and I couldn't support it. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, we can agree to disagree on this topic. I don't think waiting a week is any more different than waiting a week for other things that have sincerely come before us that may have not needed a delay. I think that there is a respectful, I'd like to think that we're going to be respectful in terms of, in my seat, as I said, prefacing why I feel strongly about this. No harm, no foul. It's benign, and it actually does address the concerns that have been raised to me regarding the fact that, yes, you're right. I think all of our committee meetings should be attended. Everyone who is in a committee should be at those meetings deliberating. But at times, we are so darn busy that you have meetings competing with each other to get people in the seats. So they're not there live, hearing the dialogue and exchange from our colleagues. This meeting that I'm proposing or recommending is clearly that a committee of the whole, which is the 11 of us, to really just, you know, in a sense, without paraphrasing a phrase, is that, you know, when it's, we get down to business, we take our jacket off, roll up our sleeves, and let's pound it out. It may be that we're satisfied with the particular structure that we've had in place. But again, it just gives, you and I dialoguing now, there are other lights, but it gives 11 people the ability to weigh in and, you know, on this subject matter.
I understand what you're saying, but what I'm hearing, and I don't know if you meant, this is coming across the way you meant it, but the way I hear it is that it's almost there's, it's being framed that there's some bickering and fighting and slights being done.
No, not at all.
So I, okay, that's kind of what I mean. That's not, my next paper's not meant to do that. It, again, is to move it forward. I think if we wait a week, as we see with other papers, I really don't think things are going to move forward in that. Again, my next paper is just, let's have a fresh set of eyes, look at this and move forward as quickly as possible. So again, I can't support holding this up another week just to have a discussion between 11 of us. Because again, we've, all 11 of us had the opportunity to attend every single meeting of this committee and this search, and to reach out to the chairman and other members to express our views as we would on every other paper or item that's in front of us. So I think we need to move expedient, excuse me, with expediency on this treasurer search. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor, to my left, I'm going to start with Barbara. She had turned her light on first and make my way up. Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Madam President. Oh, thank you, Madam President. I actually would like to put a motion out on the floor to adopt this. I think it's very important that we get together as a group of 11 to discuss this and actually have the opportunity for people to feel a part of the process, not be on committee or off committee. I also think that we've had a number of different people, when we talk about fresh eyes, you know, on these different search committees. And I think that it will give us the opportunity for us to sit down and speak about what we think is good, what we think is bad, what we think will work going forward. You know, ultimately, it might take another, it might take another track, and maybe it will go to ordinance on the next paper. But for the moment, I think we all need to take a step back and just discuss what has happened, what we see was worked well, did not work well, how we would like to move forward as a body, not as a committee. And so I think it's very, very important that we do this. And I would like to make a motion that we adopt this.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counsel, coming up, Counselor Anderson.
Yes, I believe there's a motion on the floor, and I'm prepared to support that, but I think you've said it all. I think it does make sense for all of us to go through this at one time. We all discuss what has taken place, what needs to take place. Getting us all there together, I think, makes sense, and I'm prepared to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Counselor Dark Angelo?
Two things. I ask that any vote that be taken be taken by a call aye and a nay. But I would also state a point of parliamentary inquiry regarding this. It seems as if Rule 39 and 39.01, as was indicated previously before this, has a direct relationship to this. So can we vote this motion without having a judgment on the tabled 39 and 39.1? I would raise that as a parliamentary procedure question, and then depending upon the response back, I would reserve time to ask another question on this. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Counselor Dark Angelo. Counselor Lucy? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor.
I'll yield to Counselor Dark Angelo's question.
I don't think, I think that Rule 39 speaks to appointments. I think Counselor Bucci's paper speaks to policies and procedures that can be established by the full council. I think, too, that an amendment to Rule 39 is pending. And then finally, I would say that any rule can be suspended.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, clerk, for your edification. I would assert that, not knowing fully the outcome of 39, what if we pass this, and then we find out that 39 and 39.1 is in effect, and not the, I believe it was 46, I forget the particular one, but 46 point, whatever it is, is not, and wouldn't that then be out of order? I guess my contention is, and what we had thought last week, or maybe it was the week before, but thinking that the ordinance committee would be charged with, so I'm just trying to be clear here on the process. Thank you.
Okay, and I would say that I don't think that Counselor Bucci is suggesting that next week, the committee of the whole interview and select a treasurer. That rule speaks to make recommendations fulfilling vacancies. I think Counselor Bucci's paper anticipates something far in advance of that. Perhaps issues like where will you advertise, and how long, and what will the qualifications be? I don't think that it speaks to what committee or group of people will be doing the interview, which is what Rule 39 addresses.
Thank you. Counselor Dark Angelo?
Thank you for the time. I beg your indulgence. So I guess I'm just trying to be clear then on what would constitute like a deliberation as opposed to putting parameters in place, or putting a set of criteria in place by which, by with which the committee would work? The committee of the whole here would work?
Counselor Dark Angelo, as our clerk is looking up something, again, the point of clarification, as I try to preface my statements with, this is a benign request, doesn't have anything binding. It's a request that 11 people come together and discuss what their thoughts are in terms of what procedures, what standards, what guidelines, policies, you know, whatever descriptive word we, I need to try to emphasize in terms of just defining criteria. Now, depending on what committee that would fall back to, which is obviously yet to be determined, whether it moves out and moves into another, that hasn't been discussed, but I think it would help that committee, one person's opinion, that it would help that committee define those structures once again, or reaffirm whatever structure's been in place is the one that they're going to go forward with. But again, I want to emphasize, when I'm asking to be adopted, is really a very benign request for the team to just come together for a discussion as it's been described. I'm going down the line. Counselor Altrino.
Thank you, Madam President. I think, you know, I sit on ordinance, I sit on the CFO search, and I think it would speed up the process if we just brought it to a whole, because if we have something in committee, as we were actually talking about in property, something gets voted out in committee, it still goes to the 11 people. And then everyone has their own opinion. So if ordinance, which I'm on, comes out with something three to two, four to one, five to zero, it still goes out to the 11. So, and it seems like this is a process that some people may disagree with who we hire, who we don't hire, how we do it. If we just bring it out to the 11 people, I think, you know, we are skipping a process, we're saving some time. No matter what committee it goes to, whether it's Rule 39, 46, it goes to committee A, B, C, it still has to come back to the 11 people in the city council. So I just think what Counselor Bucci has here, no matter what committee gets it, we're just adding another step right now. And, you know, I'm only on the council 10 months, but I'm under the impression this has been in committee for two and a half to three years. So if it hits the floor at 11 people, we're all 11 are now responsible for getting this process going and finding the best candidate. So my recommendation, and I believe I did second Counselor Murphy's motion. Thank you.
Counselor Lucy?
Thank you, Madam President. This is a paper I can support also. Having served on several searches, I think one of the frustrating parts is when we get to the end, that maybe some didn't feel in the loop, or, you know, maybe there's some other requirements they wanted. So I think this would be a process that right from the beginning that we could look at and get everyone in the same room, if we can do that, and have everyone voice their concerns or their desires, what they feel. But I would take this even further. I don't think sending it to, just sending it to committee will do any good. I think we've done that. I've been here all three years for this treasurer, then a treasurer CFO search. It's a very frustrating experience. Three years, if you, and I've said this before, I'm sorry if I repeated myself, but if you had said to me three years ago, in October 2012, we'd still be looking for a treasurer, I'd say you're out of your mind. So we tried the different things. You know, a couple of years, a couple of years ago, it was in finance. It had trouble getting out of finance. We finally got it to the floor. There's been delays. There's been all sorts of things that have gone wrong. I think we've. I think we've, we've gone out in the process that we've used as the only process, really, that we've had in place. And you send out requests, and I think from each time we've gone out, I think the responses have not been as strong as the prior responses. So, I think if we just go back to the same thing that we've been doing, my fear is that, again, it will be, again, for the fourth time out or whatever time it is, the responses will be even less than this past time. You know, we've tried municipal experience, we've tried, you know, non-municipal experience, and we just haven't seemed to find the right fit. We thought we found one in the CFO. Unfortunately, that didn't work out. Even this past process, we did have one candidate, but we couldn't bring that name forward. So, again, I don't think if we, wherever we send this, I think we have to forget that the idea of fresh eyes, I'm not, I don't buy into that at all. You know, the thing is, we've all looked at this. So, I just think if we go through the process again like we have been, I think we're going to come back with the same results, unfortunately. So, I'd be willing to sit down with all 10 other counselors and let's talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lucy. To my right, Counsel Matheson.
Okay. So, it has been a three-year process. It's too long. It shouldn't be taking this long, and it's because this council can't get along. The process has been controlled too tightly. Yes, we should be getting together. We've had 10 months to get together. We haven't been able to do that. There are 11 of us. We should be more involved in this process. We talk about, you know, should we use Rule 39? And 39, well, that was meant to be Rule 46. Well, the process didn't defer to Rule 39 or 46. You devolved it to a committee that doesn't even exist. It wasn't passed by a resolve or an order. And the other counselors who wanted to be involved weren't allowed to be involved. Now, you're asking to bring in a different department. Chapter 8 of the ordinances is devoted to the HR department. Its duties are entirely different than this body. Bring her in. Let's talk to HR. If we can get some ideas, there's nothing wrong with that. We should be meeting together. But someone has given authority to HR to hold resumes away from this city council. We've had two rounds of advertising. Many, many resumes have come in, and the counselors have not been allowed to see who applied. Ordinance Section 2.4 charges this body with electing a new treasurer-collector, and we haven't been able to do that. Whether or not it goes to a committee, whether or not the committee comes up the recommendation, those recommendations are not binding. And what we've been getting back from this other committee is, here are two people, those are your choices. That's not what the rules say. The ordinance charges this body with electing a new treasurer and collector, and we ought to be doing that. We should get together, all 11 of us, bring HR in if you want, but the powers don't belong with HR. The powers belong with this office. This is our duty, and we owe it to the city to fill this position and do it right. We need to start working together. That's my feeling. I'll support your motion. We should be talking.
Thank you, Counsel Matheson. And to my far right, not sure who has their light on. Counsel Spatafora.
Thank you, Madam President. I wasn't going to speak, but I think a couple of things have come up that kind of demands a response. The first thing is, you know, I agree with the council to some degree. It doesn't matter if it goes to the ordinance committee or the council of the whole. I think it's, we've reached the past, the point of no return where I think everybody should be in the room for this decision. Like every other major decision we've gone after, we need to find a treasurer as soon as possible. So, I think we bring it to the full body. To Counsel Matheson's point, I completely agree. Let the, let the HR director come here and show us all the applications. I'm all for that as well. However, being somebody on that search committee, I can, I can tell you this. I was, the process was pretty tight as far as what I saw as one of the members, and I know the other members can speak on that. Good, bad, and different, a couple of recommendations that I made to the HR director was, don't waste my time by bringing somebody before me who does not pass a Corey check or cannot be bonded, because in this position, you have to get a certain credit score. And this is something, just from my private experience, we did that all the time. So, if you've got 100 candidates, Corey check them all, you know, the ones who fit the description you want to bring forward, but Corey check them, give a credit score. If they don't make it, don't bring them before me. So, I'm on board 50/50. I think all the qualified candidates, we should say, should come before this body. Some of the candidates, Counsel Matheson, had no experience at all in the financial service industry, had none municipal. It was just a waste of the particular body's time. When we started, I didn't sit on the past search committees, but when I recommended that we do this Corey check and background check, it was almost like an ongoing dialogue between some of the members of the committee, because a couple of members that we were going to interview didn't return the Corey check or the credit check. So, for us, it would have been exercise of, a waste of time. So, I, I'm on board with everything you said, Counsel Matheson. The only thing I would say is, I don't want to see everybody who's not qualified. Let HR do their job, sort them out. If there's 100 candidates and 50 are qualified by the description of our job application, bring those 50 to us. Could not agree with you more. But I think HR did a decent job, I'll say decent job, bringing most of the stuff before us. But I think the process that you said, only two come before us, that was, that was what the committee mandated. I think by going to 11 people right now, I think it saves time. We should meet as a whole, determine what we're going to do, maybe change the qualifications if we have to, and then we'll all make the decision as 11 people, all in the same room. And the only thing I would say is, I would schedule a meeting now in your calendars, because the last thing we can do as a body is we're going to schedule a meeting and somebody can't make it, and then we have to, we have to ask that member to come back later on. It's an important job. I know that. And I would just, I would say this. We should all meet, we'll make the determination, and we'll get a treasurer as soon as we possibly can in a reasonable timeframe. So, I'm for everything you said, Counsel Matheson, but I would just want to caution of the words, I don't want to see every application, because I don't think it's fair to this body. But we'll see you tomorrow. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Spatafora. To my far left, Counsel Kinnon.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a point of information, this does not stop. And please tell me if I'm incorrect, but I think having this meeting next week doesn't stop any other committee from moving forward on what they're doing, does it?
In terms of what other committee meeting?
Well, I think there's, there's something going to ordinance next week on here that's up on the docket. Does it stop them from meeting and discussing what they want to discuss, unless that gets voted down?
Tuesday night is committee night.
Yeah, so they can go ahead and discuss what ordinance wants to discuss and what's within ordinance.
I would think any committee is, yeah, I think what we're talking about is our meeting was started.
Yeah, so I, I don't see a problem with meeting as a committee of, the entire committee to discuss this. I would, I would like to clarify something, though, for the public, particularly if we're on. This idea that we, we've been out there looking for three years is not correct. We have not been looking for three years. We've been looking since January. Prior, and I'm not making excuses for the process, but prior to that, there was debate that went on for some time in terms of how we would structure the city. During that time, which was almost two years, during that time, we came to an agreement as a council, finally, after about a year and, and maybe five months, as to how we thought we would structure, and we had to do a charter change. We did that charter change, and again, all of us were not in agreement, but that was accepted by the body. During that entire time, there was never an ad place for a treasurer, never an ad place for the CFO. So, I would not say that the council has, and then after that, we waited for six months, nearly six months, for the state to get back to us with that, oh, that charter change is okay, you can go forward. That didn't happen until the, after the election in November of 2011. So, we only had one meeting in December. And then, immediately after that happened, in January, with a new council, you, you know, went forward and set up a committee, which at the time seemed normal. I would, you know, it had gone to finance before. That seemed normal. There have been some ups and downs. We clearly didn't agree on a treasurer and CFO, but come to find out, that really worked to this city's favor. Because if a person doesn't take, and this is not to fault anybody, if a person encounters some pushback during the interview process, like that person did, if they determine that they're not going to take the job at that time, they did a good job in their interview process to get the votes. But ultimately, we as a city made out. We made out, because the process did work. That process worked in terms of not taking somebody who under pressure would have caved in that job. So, that person didn't take the job, that's good for everybody. Now, it's taken too long, but again, I just would, I'd like to defend the council here in terms of, you know, clearly, we've made some errors, but I think there's nothing wrong with having this meeting. I don't agree with Counsel, Counsel Spatafora in terms of, we should do it with 11 people. We should do it with committee, do it how it's always been done, and, you know, whether it's fresh eyes or not, I think that an expanded process will get somebody in here. And we have confused the matter. I would say the one thing that I think we've confused the matter on is continually changing what the structure's going to be like. We need to settle on a structure and go forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Kinnon. Counsel, is it Counsel Altrino? And Counsel Crowe.
Thank you, Madam President. Excuse me. I do believe it does take, a good start would really be the 11 of us, because very often, you're in committee, but you're in a different committee. So, you're not really there, privy to the conversation and ideas that are coming up. You can read the minutes, but you're really not there. And when the people come in after, if you tried to even sit on the meetings, that's fine, and you get as much information as you can, but sometimes your things are pulled in a couple of different directions. So, all here at the same time, focusing on the same thing, to figure it out. Maybe go, after that, it goes out into some other committees to do some other vetting processes. But you do feel left, when I'm looking at these 10 or eight, or whatever there will be, who wasn't there? And, you know, did they ask the questions that I wanted to ask? Or, you mean that, so, and what's those responses? Do you keep asking those same questions? Do you assume that those questions were asked? Do you want to follow up? But you weren't there for the conversation. So, I think it's really important that we are all here. This is, it's been a long time, everyone's said that, been through every iteration, and I think an iteration that starts with all of us here, putting it all together, knowing what we want, knowing how we're going to do it. We have a checklist of who's doing what, what's happening when. So, we have a, sort of a work plan to get us to the success is a good start, instead of breaking up and it sticks in one committee. And then, then you flavor in some other committees, and then we finally get out to the whole. But then, you don't even get all, all the, I mean, you can request them, but all the minutes, you know. So, to see that evolution and why this person is here. So, I think I am very for this. I think this is a good way to start.
Thank you, Counsel Crowe. Counsel Anderson.
Thank you, Madam President. As I mentioned earlier, I intend to support the paper. But I want to, want to say that, assuming that this does prevail this evening, and listening to the dialogue going on, it certainly seems like it will, that we not waste time during this week. You know, if we walk out of here this evening after having voted for this, and then there's no dialogue that takes place between now and next week, then we will have wasted a week of time. So, I think that there should be some, some offline discussions that take place between various counselors who have some thoughts of what has taken place, some ideas and so forth, that, that, that we think about this and not just walk out of here and end the discussion, end the discussion at the close of this meeting and not pick it up, because we will have wasted, wasted time in that. So, there's certainly nothing wrong with us talking amongst one another during the week that will, I believe, speed up the process, get some dialogue going. And, you know, one of the things that I've seen happen in this council for a long time is when, you know, you get 11 people up to talk about anything, there's a lot of posturing that takes place. It's very seldom that people will move away from their first position, that they'll hold to their position and they'll argue that position. But I think if we can do some, some discussion offline, that that'll speed up that process. I would hope that that's what the council does in this ensuing week. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Anderson. And we would do that, as our clerk has just reminded me, without violating any open meeting law.
That's right. We would not be violating any open meeting law. I'm not suggesting that there, that there be subcommittees meeting to circumvent the open meeting law. I'm talking about, I'm talking about picking up the telephone and talking to one another about ideas of things that we know that we do on other issues. And I'm just suggesting that if, unless we do that, we waste, we waste this week. And I would hope we wouldn't, we would not do that. Thank you.
I agree. To my Counsel Nester.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate, Counsel Lucy, as the chairman, just said it, but three years, he sat here and expressed his frustration, I was going to work. All I see this is a delay. We're going to send it to talk to 12 people who have, who have had the entire three years or a year and a half to discuss with every other single member of the council, what their wishes, what their concerns were, request resumes, request to be part of the process, to sit on these meetings, to talk about it, and then we're going to send it to another committee. So, this is just, to me, it looks more and more like just an unintended delay. Again, there's no disrespect or slight meant to anybody, but I think we should move this along as quick as possible. We are wasting money with consultants that I don't think anybody's happy with. So, let's move this along. And again, we've had all these three years, year and a half to three years, and everybody has been part of the process. If they weren't part of the process, they were invited to be part of the process. So, again, this is just, to me, it looks like an unintended delay. Let's just move it forward and move, and move the treasurer position forward and get somebody in here.
Duly noted. We have a motion on the table?
To adopt, and Counsel Doc Angelo has asked for a roll call.
Counsel Doc Angelo has asked for a roll call, and the motion is?
To adopt.
To adopt.
Counsel Anderson, Crowe, Doc Angelo, Lucy, Kinnon, Matheson, Murphy, Nester, Spatafora, Altrino, Bucci.
Yes.
So, it's adopted 9 to 2.
Adopted 9 to 2. Next order of business?
Ordered in accordance with council rules, the search for a treasurer be referred to the ordinance committee for further action. Counsel Nester.
Counsel Nester for the paper.
Thank you. As we just discussed, Rule 39, this search is technically in the treasures department. I think we had a, an order resolved to come up with a special committee for the CFO slash treasurer, and then once we cut that off, I'm not sure we actually amended that or not. So, it was sat in a, it sat in a committee. The committee's done a fine job. It just, unfortunately, has been unsuccessful. If you were in private industry and you hired a recruiting firm and you were not, and they were not providing candidates for you, you couldn't find a candidate that you agreed on, you would hire, you'd have a fresh set of eyes look at it, you'd hire another, another group. Again, this is not meant to slight or disrespect anybody that's on that committee. I think the committee's worked hard, you've seen it. But again, I just think we need a fresh set of eyes. Let's move it to the committee that technically, our rules say it should be in. We have the charge, we have the job description. Let this group take a look at that, make changes if they wanted with the HR director, and let's move it forward and try to get somebody in here as quick as possible. Just a fresh set of eyes. Thank you.
Counsel Doc Angelo.
Thank you, Madam President. And I agree with the counselor. To me, this speaks right to our own rules, and I think the current, the previous committee did a, did a good job. It just didn't happen to be the right set of circumstances. So, you know, try, try again, and I think this is the right way to go, and we can move it forward this way, irrespective of what just previously occurred or what occurred previously. And I think this can move it forward. No time to haste. Ordinance has indicated that they'll make this a top priority. I believe that, and let's get to work, and we can do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Doc Angelo. Counsel Matheson.
I just agree with Counsel-
I just agree with Counselor Nestor over here. What's wrong with a fresh set of eyes? Counselor Lucy's committee has had two cracks at this. Why would he be against a fresh set of eyes in another committee? It's not personal. It's another committee. I think Counselor Cannon makes a point. It's tough for 11 people to go through the screening process, but, you know, the meetings ought to be noticed. The counselors ought to be allowed to attend. You know, that doesn't mean that you can't have a committee. It just means that other people need to be allowed to be involved. Did I come out right? Other people should be involved from this body. To exclude that information, to privatize the process, it's just not the right way of doing business. You know, I think to get things moving, we have to start following our own rules, whether that's Rule 39 or Rule 46, but it shouldn't be off the rulebook, and it should start ASAP. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Lucy.
Thank you, Madam President. And again, I'll probably reiterate what I said. Committee did work hard. You're only as good as the applicants you receive. They gave, you know, when you say about involvement, you know, I can go back to, you know, when the council was supposed to be for the, for the CFO interviews, and we couldn't get 100% participation. So, again, you're as good as the applicants. I think those, you know, the 22 applicants that we received, or even how many we had the week, the time before, I think if everyone saw those applicants, and again, I said it in public, it was real easy, get down to the five and six that we started to interview. So, again, you know, we advertised in all the right places. We advertised for a month, and the applicants are what they were. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lucy. Counselor Darkangelo?
Just ask for a roll call on this one, it comes time. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson?
Yes, thank you. It sounds like the prior vote we took of the council, the committee of the whole, to meet going through all of this should be exhausted. I mean, that's what, it's my understanding, that's what you had intended to do, that next week where we meet with the committee of the whole, that this be the, the item that the entire council focuses on, that we don't have other committee meetings, that we deal with, with this, that, is that, is that correct?
Correct.
Then I would just ask the sponsor of this, doesn't it make sense that we just hold off, do we even table this until we've finished the committee of the whole? And then, then we will be deciding whether or not it then goes to ordinance or, or what other committee. So I would just ask for a second look at this one. Thank you.
For point of clarification, Counselor Anderson, are you making a table motion?
No, I just left it as a discussion.
Counselor Cannon?
Yes. Now I'm troubled, deeply troubled if that is the case. Because I specifically grabbed this microphone and asked you, Madam President, that exact question and said this would not prevent, this was not to prevent other committees from meeting and discussing what they wanted to discuss in committee. So if this one were to go down, I would then have to agree with Counselor Nestor and say that it was nothing but a delaying tactic. There is nothing wrong with sending this to ordinance. There's nothing wrong with sending this to this, whatever this other committee is called.
Appointment committee.
Appointment committee. It might be best if we sent it to ordinance, finance, and the appointment committee in the full council and had a competition as to who could get it done and done quickest. Competition oftentimes works. But if this were to go down, I would, I'd probably ask to have my previous vote retracted because I think it was a sham as it, as it was presented, as it was presented to me just a few minutes ago, that it was not a delaying process and that other committees could discuss this. So I would pre, please ask people to vote for this and move the process forward. If the council takes it over and does a good job, great. If they don't, which I have strong opinions that 11 people, trying to get them together is gonna be extremely difficult, as we all know, and trying to get any consensus built, as Counselor Anderson clearly stated, clearly, is much more difficult than a small group. And most things, most things, when they have a 4-0 or 5-0 vote, when they come out of committee, generally get enough support to pass. So, again, I, I would ask that, you know, that people support what was really presented here. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cannon. And to respond to your suggestion, or your comment, actually, it's not a suggestion. You stated that you would think that my response could have been a scam or sham. I'm not sure which piece of this, but I want, I just, would be. Well, I'm going to say it very clearly once again, and I believe I did, you know, I don't think I misrepresented anything. You asked about whether there would be council committee meetings next week or could be held. Of course they could be. Our council meetings start, I said, before the committee of the whole. So, I mean, I think any committee meeting is still, has the ability to be scheduled for the work that they're doing, whether it be ordinance committee, as you pointed out, or in my thought, safety committee, finance committee, if a paper or something else has to be brought forward and discussed, or anything that you said was moved to ordinance tonight. So I think the, the response was as honest and accurate as it possibly could be, and that was, yes, it could, you could have a committee meeting next week. But the committee of the whole itself, to respond to Counselor Anderson's point, the council, the committee of the whole's agenda would be the 11 of us meeting. So would there be a 7:00 PM committee meeting? Don't think so. I think it would be in conflict. But there's plenty of time from 5:30 to 7:00 to plan accordingly that other committee meetings could be held. Did I misrepresent anything? I'm baffled as to why you-
We'll find out.
Well, how do you tie that to this particular vote? Well, I think, okay, we all have our own opinion on our position with this vote. And by define, there's no other lights. My position is personally, I do not see moving it from one committee to another, my personal opinion, is going to get us any more closer to the filling of a treasurer's role until we at least have some dialogue around the standards. But that's just my opinion, which I have the, oh, your light's on. Counselor Cannon.
Thank you, Madam President. And I can assure you that if this goes this way, this is another line of this year's, and maybe some of the reasons we can't come to agreement here. So, thank you. It's very clear what you said.
Thank you, Counselor Cannon. No other further lights.
Okay. So Counselor Nestor's motion is to adopt. Counselor Darkangelo has for a roll.
Counselor Nestor's motion is to adopt, and Counselor Darkangelo would like a roll call.
Counselor Anderson. Crowe. Darkangelo.
Yes.
Lucy.
No.
Cannon.
Yes.
Matheson.
Yes.
Murphy.
No.
Nestor.
Yes.
Spatafora.
Yes.
Altrino.
No.
Bucci.
No.
So it's defeated 6 to 5.
It is defeated 6 to 5. Next order of business?
Ordered in accordance with provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 17, copies of all city contracts be placed on file in the city clerk's office. Counselors Matheson, Murphy, Bucci, and Darkangelo.
Counselor Matheson for the paper.
So sometimes it can be a little frustrating to know where to look to find a contract, and obviously, this is something that's gonna help us do our jobs as a, as a party, especially the, the elected body of the people. I know some of these contracts are in engineering, a lot of contracts are in the mayor's office. You can find most of them over at the city solicitor's office, and sometimes you can find them in the controller's office. But we need one central depository. And by Mass General Laws, that's the key, the record keeper, and that's our city clerk. And we're lucky to have one of the best city clerks in the Commonwealth. We should be depositing copies of all the contracts there so they're accessible by this body. So I'm asking to pass this to you.
Counselor Darkangelo.
I would like to just talk about the city clerk for about 20 to 25, no, I'm just kidding. This, this is something that seems redundant, but I do think it's appropriate. It's been a logistical nightmare to try to get some of these things. So without adding more burden to the clerk that already does a great job, I think this, we can really make this simple, just throw all of them in a file, and this will help all of us, because I know we've all tried to seek these things out. So the counselor and I had talked about this, so I, I'm definitely in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other lights on Counselor Matheson's motion to adopt, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next order of business?
Resolved, it is the sense of the city council that the traffic commission review parking on William Street from the intersection of Rudolph Street to the end. Counselor Cannon.
Counselor Cannon?
Just move to traffic, please.
On Counselor Cannon's motion to move to traffic, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next order of business?
Resolved, it is the sense of the city council that the traffic commission installs stop signs at the intersections of Kimball and Sylvan Street and Kimball and Lennox Road, and a slow children's sign on Lennox Road. Counselor Murphy. Move, move to traffic.
On Counselor Murphy's motion to pass, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next order of business?
Resolved, it is the sense of the city council that the city solicit proposals for auditing services for a term not to exceed three years to commence upon termination of the current contract. Counselor Matheson and Murphy.
Counselor Matheson for the paper.
So we've had the same auditor for 10, 15 years or so. I don't think we've ever solicited proposals. This is $100,000 a year at least, oftentimes much more than that we spend in auditing services. You know, we've had some speed bumps in the past, so back to the fresh set of ideas philosophy, fresh set of eyes. You know, why not open this up? Let's talk to other firms that have been known to do this very well and see where we can go from there.
On seeing no lights, on Counselor Matheson's motion to refer to finance, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next order of business?
Yeah. The correction is Counselor Matheson wanted this to be a resol, in that case, on Counselor Matheson's motion to pass, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passed.
Resolved, it is the sense of the city council that based on the success of the pilot program, the traffic commission and board of health establish a permanent program of licensing and permitting mobile food vendors. Counselor Nestor.
Counselor Nestor for the paper.
Thank you. This was an initiative by the mayor's office that I fully supported. We actually had four trucks out there tonight, all reports, all this is working fabulously. The vendors are happy, the constituents are happy. So what we'd like to do is, we originally put it through on a temporary basement to see how it would go. What we'd like to do is to make this a permanent ordinance and allow these trucks to be there within seasonal times or a year round. So I'd hope that we could pass this resolve and ask the board of health and the traffic commission to make the area and the standards permanent. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Nestor. To my far right, Counselor Spatafora.
The only thing I would add, Madam President, if the sponsor's willing to, I believe this should go to the ordinance as well. I have some input that I'd like to share with the rest of the council, and I fortunately wasn't there last year, or whatever this, I know it went through ordinance, but I think you have to come through ordinance. One of the, the real brief things, I don't know if anybody's been watching or paying attention to this, I am in favor of this, but I think we have to spell out a little bit more accuracy in how this works. A lot of communities are going through the same growth of this industry, and there's a lot of frustration on established restaurants in the area that have a footprint they pay a lot more money for on the same area. Well, I'm for this. One of the things that I found out after this was put in, again, I'm for it, but just if the mobile food truck, this is state law now, if the, if the mobile food truck is licensed out of, say, Medford, the sales tax goes to the city of Medford, not the city of Malden. So I want to make sure that we're being fair to all the local businesses and merchants that are here right now, that the food trucks are at least have the ability to find space in Malden to, to use as a commissary, so we're at least getting that meals tax. Again, I'm not saying I'm against this, I'd just like to see it come back some ordinance. A lot of cities have gone through this right now, that they've made some questions about, you know, trash fees and proximity to other restaurants. Again, I'm 100% for it, I just want to see it come back to ordinance or wherever the sponsor would like to go. I'd just like to add a couple more caveats to the proposal, so, is that okay? Is the sponsor?
Yeah.
Are you the sponsor?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Counselor Nestor, we will-
I'm all set. It's, it's, I haven't had any, well, I've had one complaint from one restaurant around here that they're concerned about where they are in proximity to their restaurant. Again, I'm for this, I think competition's good, to Counselor Cannon's point. But the same token is, if I'm paying meals tax and I'm down the street, why are they not paying meals tax to the city? That's the only, that's my only question.
Counselor Nestor.
I have no issue moving it to ordinance. I just wanted to clarify, I haven't received any calls negative on this at all from any merchants or anybody actually in the city whatsoever, so they've all been positive. So I just wanted clarification on that. But I have no issue moving it to, to ordinance first.
Right, we just have a series of lights. Counselor Matheson, are you speaking? Counselor Altrino?
I had a few questions, but Counselor Spatafora echoed them, and my only concern is, I think it's great, is this meals tax, if other people are, but I guess it's a state law, so even if we passed an ordinance that we'd want the meals tax here, we couldn't do that, I would imagine. Is that correct?
Well, and I might be speaking out of, you know, again, I know this is the Counselor Nestor's paper because it's in the, in the square. We have to allow them to have permits. We grant them the ability to sit in the street and use it for a permit. What I would like to see is at least the ability that we, we're giving preference to a Malden truck. I know one of the, I don't know about all the trucks, but I know the Fish Taco truck, I don't know his name, I apologize. I know he's licensed to do business in the city of Malden. So we're getting the meals tax from that, that truck, which is great. The second, you know, if there's another truck, I'm not gonna call out one that I know isn't registered in Malden, a commissary, we can't get any meals tax from them. And, and the, basically, is, oh, the chase is on. So I would just want to make sure, apples for apples, if, you know, if, if a pizza place is paying meals tax to the city of Malden, and we pass that incentive to do capital improvement plans, I think it's fair that everybody went in there, and we got some complaints from restaurants on that, that bill, we know that, and we're using that money for capital improvement plans, I just want to make sure it's equitable to all merchants out there. And if they can't, maybe they can't apply for that, you know, because we gotta limit the amount of food trucks, I would think. I mean, there's only four or five spaces in the front of City Hall right now, so I just want to make sure that when we make this permanent, we have some input on the process and procedures. Thank you.
I'm fine. I think it's a great idea, the food trucks. I've heard great things about it. Just be nice to get the meals tax out of it, but understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Altrino. Counselor Darkangelo?
Thank you, Madam President. And just one recommendation in case I'm not able to make the ordinance committee meeting. I think one of the counselors had touched upon this earlier. And it's a great program, and I support it, and it's a good thing, adds a nice vibrancy and diversity to downtown. One thing, though, is maybe where we could work out that certain themed trucks are not near similar themed restaurants. I think there was an issue with a Mexican truck right across the street from a Mexican restaurant, which maybe that's not the most fair thing. So I would ask that in the deliberations that maybe you could have consideration for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Darkangelo. Counselor Anderson?
I'll say.
To my left, Counselor Cannon?
Yes, and thank you for Counselor Spatafora for bringing up, we'd like to make sure that this stays under the control of the city council and not under the board of health and the traffic commission ultimately, for those very reasons. You know, the, we don't want to be losing the meals tax. One thing that, that we may be able to do is, like we provide a residential abatement a residential abatement to people with real estate, some kind of residential abatement on the permit that would distinguish a difference in permitting for those from outside of Malden and those from inside of Malden. You might do it based upon the average receipt from a fast food restaurant and from the meals tax, and tack that onto the permit value, so that we would indeed still be getting our meals tax even though they're going to Medford or wherever. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Cannon. Seeing no more lights on Counsel Nester's motion to move and, I mean, to refer to ordinance, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next order of business.
Dear counselors, the Northern Strand Community Trail Bike to the Seapath, the trail is now a reality. As you know, the trail redevelops an abandoned railroad right of way that traverses the city for three miles and connects with the neighboring cities of Everton Revere into a multimodal recreational trail that can be used by bicyclists, pedestrians, and other non-motorized forms of transportation. The city of Malden recognizes the trail as a versatile recreational amenity for all residents, new open space uniquely woven into the fabric of Malden's existing urban setting, and an economic engine for community revitalization that has the potential to attract business to the surrounding corridor and increase property values in the abutting neighborhoods. To encourage land uses that are compatible with the trail in harmony with the surrounding land uses and in the interest of public good, and to promote development along the trail that benefits its occupants and users of the trail, I propose the enclosed trail-oriented development overlay district for your consideration. As opposed, the trotto may be applied over parcels that are located within the neighborhood business, residential office, highway business, central business, and industrial zoning districts, which directly abut the abandoned railroad right of way that contains the trail. Thank you for your consideration, and please do not hesitate to contact me with any question. Sincerely, Gary Christensen, Mayor.
Seeing no lights on Counsel Lucy's motion to refer to both planning and ordinance for the purposes of, you know, scheduling a public hearing on the matter, all in favor? Opposed? Next order of business.
The standing committee on ordinance to whom was referred paper number 355, series of 2012, having considered the same, make the following report. Bureau of Design, that section 8.4, the revised ordinances of 1991 be amended regarding residency of city employees. Committee recommends that this paper be reported out favorably with the following amendment: that the text of section 8.4.1.1 be stricken and the following inserted in place thereof. An essential employee is a person employed in any of the following positions: police chief, fire chief, city solicitor, controller, treasurer, collector, assessor, director of public works, director of water utilities, director of public facilities, information technology director, superintendent of cemeteries, city engineer, director of human resources, city clerk, director of public health, director of permits, inspection, and planning services, director of human services, library director, veteran services director, emergency management director, teen program coordinator, director of the senior center, recreation coordinator, and any other department heads that may be created. Counselor Nester for the committee.
Counsel Nester, I'm sorry, on Counsel Nester's motion to receive the committee report, all in favor?
Aye.
Counsel Nester.
I fully intend to support this, I think the time has come for this. I would defer to the sponsor of the paper if he would like to expand and give us a recap on the paper and the need for it. Thank you.
Counsel Cannon.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. This is essentially a paper which would require that any department head in the city that's within the city control, not the school department, but the city control, be a resident of the city in the future, meaning anybody who's currently here, currently here, employed as a department head would not have to be a resident of the city today or until they retire, if they so choose. What it would require, however, is that if we were to go out for a new police chief, and we were going to hire somebody for police chief, that person would then have to have six months and, please, Madam Clerk, if I'm incorrect, I think it's six months they would have to move back into the, into the city. The council, if it so choose at that point, could also help the candidate, if they chose a candidate to move into the city financially, by helping them move, whatever they chose to do. But the reason for this, and I have been bringing this up for many years prior, actually, long, long before I was a councilor, going back at least 20 years, saying that there was a trend going to go on, and we need look no further than the school department to see what that trend would be like. But in 1994, in the administration, there were 36.4% of the, if we go back to 1969, 100% of the administration lived in Malden, in the school department. In 1994, it had dwindled down to 36.4%. In 2009, it was 15.8%. It is now two out of, two out of 19. Of the 33 people who make $100,000 or more in the city of Malden School Department, 5.6% of them live in the city of Malden. The median family income in Malden today, in 2010, maybe less now, is $56,374. The median family income. The average home price is $272,000. When I was first at this 15 years ago, we had a packed house with firefighters in here and police officers in here, saying we couldn't do this because they couldn't afford to live in the city at that time. So, that was actually true at that time based upon one salary. But today, our median home price is $272,000. To afford that would take a salary of about $65,000 a year. The median police officer in the city, average police officer in the city last year earned $86,000. The average firefighter earned $67,000. Those median, just one salary, are significantly more than the median family income in the city of Malden, would support on one salary, the home. So what does it say? What does it say when the department head, I'm not looking to make this everybody, but what does it say when the department head of the police force or the fire department, these people making $100,000 plus, does not live in your city? They cannot empathize with the issues that you're feeling. Doesn't mean everybody who lives in the city is good, doesn't mean those folks who don't live in the city are not doing the best they can. However, when you have to be here 24 by 7, you certainly have the feel for your residents, and it's not asking too much for them to live in the city. If we don't go this way, we will soon be like in the school department, down to having two of our leaders be here. In the police department today, we have 22.9% of those making $100,000 or more live in the city. That is 35 people. In the fire department, it's a little better at 37 and a half. I would tell you, if you went back 30 years, you would see that it was significantly, significantly more, well above 50%, that the top leadership was living here. And again, the question is, what message does it send to the residents if suddenly everybody but the mayor of the city making over $100,000 is no longer living here? So I would ask that you support this. This is no different than corporations hiring somebody and asking them to move to where their corporate headquarters is, in that vicinity, our stockholders expecting certain things. Again, not an overall hardship, it will incent those who are the most aggressive in the future to say, geez, I just passed that captain test, or I just passed that lieutenant test, maybe I won't move outside of the city of Malden now that I've gotten a big pay increase, maybe I'll stay there, and that would make us a better community. When I was growing up, as many of you were, we would have teachers, firefighters, police officers, living all over the place in the city. That is no longer the case. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Cannon. Counsel Dr. Angelo.
Thank you, Madam President, and to me, this ordinance should be retitled the "I Believe in Malden" ordinance, because really, we have so much talent here, and I think we can tap into it. We have so many people in Malden with great qualifications, I'm sure we could fill all of these positions, and I'd like to look to our own clerk who lives in Malden, who's a lifelong Malden resident. Find me a better city employee than our, than our city clerk, and she's one of the best city clerks in the state, and she's a Malden resident, right? So, to me, this is a "believe in Malden" ordinance. This is saying that we have the talent here. This is saying to people that may think about coming here, come here, because we have talented people. That's, to me, the perspective that I'd like to look at this about. So, I'm in support of this. I, you know, we did talk about some other things and would be open to, you know, maybe there's ways we can incent it even more, as the counselor who previously spoke indicated so, but I think this is a good start. What happened was the pendulum was so far one way, you know, 50 years ago, the pendulum was so far one way that only people who lived in Malden needed apply type of thing, and now it swung so far the other way that we have so very few people who we know can fill these jobs. We have talent here in Malden, so let's try to swing the pendulum to the middle and have the best of both worlds here, so I'm in support of this. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Dr. Angelo. Any other questions, comments related to the paper? Counsel fiber Murphy.
Yes, not having actually seen the full paper, what other caveats are there to incent people, i.e., you're talking, we're talking about we can incent them with, you know, travel help? Is there anything specific in here, or is this left to be determined after the fact?
It's left to be determined. To be determined.
Yeah. It is strictly up to the council. I'll give you a for instance. Let's, let's say we're looking for a treasurer, and we want the treasurer, we see a treasurer that we like, and they live in Worcester, as an example, and we say, we'd like you to move to Malden, and if you move to Malden, the council could come here and say, look, this person, from an actuarial standpoint, has 20 more years to go on their job, and we say, we'd like you to move to Malden, and we're going to pay you X for salary to move to Malden, we're going to help you move, that might cost us $30,000, and we'll pay you a bonus. This is commonly done, and, and you do it, you know, again, that would be a recommendation, hopefully, from the committee that was in search of this person. Make the case that this person is worth it, like we do in the workplace, and say, look, over 20 years, if we give this person an additional $40,000, it's $2,000 a year. I would hope, and this is something where I was at fault for not bringing it up, that in the future, what we do in our departments is create succession plans, which we haven't done, succession plans which would say, these people are favored for the future jobs, top jobs in the city, and this is how we're going to get them there, and we would coach those people that, hey, you passed that lieutenant's exam, you probably ought to stay here if you want to be considered someday for the chief of the department. So, again, I think there's, just like we're doing the, you know, residential abatement to incent people to have owner occupied, this would incent those people, but it doesn't preclude the council coming up with a deal package for anybody that it likes, as long as they're willing to move here. So, thank you.
Counsel Murphy.
Okay, and I want, you know, I, in the real, I shouldn't say real business world, but in the private business sector, that's something that's done very commonly. But my question is, you know, just having gone through the process of trying to expand even the job grade, the salary associated with job grades, there was a whole process to that. So, I guess my question, I don't know if anyone here can answer it, Counsel Cannon, maybe you can, is, do we have the authority to actually create these added bonuses during the hiring process without having to go through, you know, a whole ordinance change on salaries, et cetera?
The answer on a one-time payment is that we do. We would still have to take a vote as a council, and we would have to get the mayor's authorization. I don't think that, I don't think that those things should preclude us. Again, and I am of the belief that we should act as partners, but if you get eight votes for an important position, and you then want to bonus it, or the mayor wants to hire a chief and says, this is how I want to hire a chief, and he needs six votes to get it, if he can't get six votes for the chief of the police department to get what he wants, probably not the person we want to hire. It does make you agree, but it makes you work together at the same time. So, that's how I would answer that. If it were something that would have to change their salary, their actual salary, that would be different. It would still go to the council, how we change salaries all the time. So, thank you.
Counsel Murphy, don't. Counsel Anderson.
Thank you, Madam President. I am in support of this paper. I want to say that from the offset. I, I do want to say that I originally had some reservations about eliminating people that lived outside of the city from getting these positions. I, I was concerned that we would be sacrificing residency for the, for what may be the best qualified person. I think we always want to find the best person that we can get for the job. Now, that the language that allows us, allows the applicant that we would hire, you know, time to move back into the city, the idea of having some other moving options available, incentives, makes very good sense for us. So I think we have the best of both worlds. We want to, we want to be able to keep the high salaries here in the city of Malden by hiring Malden people or hiring people that six months down the road will be Malden people. So, I say hear, hear to this, yes, let's go forward with it, and I'm in total support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Anderson. Counsel Lucy.
Thank you, Madam President. I certainly get the intent and the, what this is going to try to solve, and, you know, I did have a couple reservations, but I think a couple of them were actually mentioned tonight. One would be, I do like the idea of being able to give a bonus to people. I think in the, again, in the, in the private sector, that's what they do do. I like it because some of the salaries that we probably have people bringing them in, they may not entice the person totally to come here, so I mean, that has to be looked at as well. I think we do have some, some people employed by the city now that I, to me, they're underpaid. But that being said, you know, I do like that idea of the bonus situation, and I also like the idea of a succession plan. I think that's what's something we are probably definitely lacking in this city. I think too many times, you know, we get busy with our own day, and, you know, you go into an office, and you could have eight or nine employees in that office, but everyone seems to probably do their own thing, go their separate way, just get the day's work done, and they go home, whereas I think any, any good business, they like to have a succession in a place, succession plan in place, because it solves a lot of aggravation when you do have an opening. So, you know, again, I was, you know, I bleed Malden as much as anybody up here, and, you know, when it first, the residency requirement, I did have some reservations, but I think, you know, those two items for me, I think I'm able to support this paper. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lucy. To my right, Counsel Matheson? Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Altrino.
Thank you, Counsel President. When this was brought into ordinance, I was quite excited about it, and Counsel Anderson and I actually shared the concern, you know, making sure we get the correct, you know, the best person, someone who's certified, if there's a test they have to take to be inspector of water or fire chief or what have you. I don't know if this conflicts with civil service, I don't know the rule on that, if we hire civil service for a chief. You know, the only, I haven't gotten an answer yet from the city solicitor, because I don't want what happened to us in the resident employment monitoring that the federal court seemed to overturn in, say, Fall River and other places, that we'd be passing an ordinance that is legally not bound. I don't know the law on that, I asked the city solicitor for an opinion, she hasn't had the time to send it to us, but it's something to think about, are there? I know that, at some point, the Mass Teachers Association did fight that legally, and for residency ordinances for teachers across the Commonwealth, and it got to the House and stuff like that. I just don't want to be, I'm all in favor of it. Counsel Cannon couldn't have said it any better. And we do need a succession plan, especially for our younger employees like Chuck. Chuck was trained by Dom, Chuck lives two houses, two streets away from me, fantastic controller, but we also have fantastic non-residents, too, and, but I think- But I think giving an incentive, you can't really give a bonus for living in a city, but you can legally, but you can give them a bonus for taking a position. It's just how you phrase it. But I'm all for it. I think it's great. I get a little nervous that, you know, especially from the treasurer search. You know, we didn't have many Malden candidates apply, and none made, especially in the first interview, none made it to the CFO area, second interview. So, I just have some precautions. I'd like to see what legal thinks about it, but again, as written, and I voted in favor of it first, I'll vote it again. Just wanted a quick precaution on whether this is something legal. But, again, Counselor Kinnon couldn't have said it any better. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Altrino. Counsel Matheson.
I really like this ordinance. I think this is a great step in the right direction. I just wanted to mention a couple of the department heads that live here in Malden, Chief Holland and Anthony Rodriguez. They're both great, too. But no, these are our best jobs. Why wouldn't the city offer their best jobs to the people who live here and pay our taxes and drive in our streets and send their kids to our schools? They deserve a crack at these jobs. These are really good jobs. Anyway, I think the committee did some good work on this. I think Counselor Anderson's amendment is a very valid one. We do want to interview people from outside the city, give them an opportunity to come in and become Maldonians. We can give them relocation stipend for that and a bonus, and I think that's, this is a well-drafted ordinance. I'm happy to support it.
Thank you, Counsel Matheson. Counsel Spatafora.
Thank you, Madam President. And I, too, I think I shared the similar concerns prior to this and seeing the paper, so I appreciate having the paper in front of me. But, you know, the first thing I would say to the residents and to the fellow council members is, you know, we're trying to do something similar as far as changing or altering the mindset of the city, you know, this parking requirement we're looking at. And I don't want to get in a tangent, but I've said in a couple of the meetings is, you know, we should try it. Same thing with this, and if we do something wrong, we can always come back and amend the paper to make it work, you know, so that we are making sure we're doing the best thing, not only for the residents in Malden, but maybe the employees as well. And I think the paper, as it is written, excuse me, it seems, you know, perfect. I think we should at least try it. Again, if we make a mistake, we come back and we correct it, but I think it's at least worth going for. You know, there's a lot said about having some department heads live in the city. I'm sure, I'm not going to name names, and I'm not picking on the ones who don't right now, but we all know a couple in here that we call on regularly, and it's nice to have them real close, proximity. You know, there's something I wanted to do a while ago, not only at the department head level, but even on the, down the ranks. You know, I know we can't give tax incentives to, you know, say policemen to live in the city, because I think a couple of cities have tried that in the 70s and the early 80s, and that was shot down by the court, too, giving somebody a tax abatement. You know, one of the ideas that I threw around a while ago was, if you're a patrolman in the city of Malden, you get to take home a cruiser. And that way, the cruiser stays in your yard, similar to the state troopers where, you know, it's your car, you're assigned to it, you can do your duties in the city, and if you can take your kids to school with it, it just gives, it gives that whole incentive of, you know, if somebody in the neighborhood is tied to the community, they're going to make sure that street is kept clean, you know, it's a little bit safer, and just having somebody in the neighborhood to talk to. And it all comes back to, too, you know, they're good-paying jobs. We should allow the citizens here to do that, and more importantly, we should allow them to spend their money in the city of Malden. You know, we're all talking about where we go and shop and eat, and there's a lot of places in Malden we can do that now, and it's getting better every year. But I think it's worth taking a chance on this paper. And like I said, if it falls flat, we'll come back here as a body, and we can always amend it so it works. But I think it's worth definitely taking the shot, and I support this 100 percent. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Counsel Spatafora. And from my seat, I, too, want to compliment, oops, I'm sorry. Counsel Crow.
I liked, I love the idea of it. I'm struggling with, you know, knowing some of the people that we do have in the community and that don't, that don't live in the community but work and really work diligently and, you know, not having that option. I mean, they can come into the city, but extenuating circumstances often does preclude some of them from being able to move to another city. Family, maybe someone is a police chief in another city, and they have to live there. So, you know, I do think you have to, we have to take that into consideration. I do think that a important part, and I believe that, you know, all, with all things equal, and, you know, preferential treatment goes with the Malden residents. I do believe that, courtesy interviews and even support around some of those things, I just worried that we might be missing out on some of the great people that would want to come to Malden, and maybe it's, we really need to make, create a culture that living and working in here is really what you want to do, not even for the end goal to be the head of one of the departments, but, you know, making it down that grassroots and putting this overlay. I really like the part about allowing, helping people to move if they can. And although maybe they can, and, you know, now, as they couldn't before, I do think we have to take a little more consideration about what some circumstances might be that is going to preclude them from moving in six months. If they have a house that they can't sell, then they can't afford here. If they, you know, I mean, there's got to be, if they have ill parents that they're taking care of and, you know, can do the work, but, you know, can't really be in the city, I just think there's, it might be some other things that we have to kind of take a little bit into consideration because people's lives, you know, are important. But I do like the paper. I do think that it is, it's a strong statement to say we want the people that live here to be committed here. So, I'm a little on the fence, still.
Thanks, Counsel Crow. I, too, just want to compliment the group for the committee, for the work that they have been working on for some time, because this actually, as you had opened up your comments, has been around for a while. I have a quick question, though, regarding, I know this was crafted specifically for the essential employees, which is listed. Unfortunately, I hadn't seen this until tonight. So, and I want to preface my comments with, I'm a little bit more over the fence with this in terms of my supporting it. I just want to know, did we, or did the deliberations at all discuss any type of other residency requirement in terms of other municipal type employment that is non-contractual in nature? So, for instance, you know, the mayor does have it on the radar screen that, you know, most new jobs that are opening up and people are applying, like with our building projects and other entities that we're looking for Malden residents only, do we not want to think that there may be the opportunity to also craft that into this residency requirement as well? Was that discussed at deliberations?
Other items were discussed. I've been down this path numerous times, again, both on the council and off the council. And I wanted to come to a simple, workable solution that could pass the council. And as Counsel Spatafora has alluded to, if we find something else that we want to add to this, subtract from this, amend somehow, we can do that. But I think this deals with those who are at the top in every department and sends a message to the city, to those working for the city, you know, and I won't go over it again. Counsel Altrino did ask about the legality. This has been tried all the way up to the Supreme Court, and we have, I have, I can give you that documentation. It is actually in a binder on my desk upstairs. I'm sorry, I didn't bring it down today. Good luck if you think you're ever going to get the answer from the solicitor. I've been asking for about four years. But I have the case law upstairs on my desk, so you're welcome to see it. Again, if you went to, and this is where Counsel Spatafora alluded to, if you were going to give anything to the police or the fire or something at the rank and file level, those who are members of the union, you have to bargain that. That is case law, too, already decided. So, they could bargain away their right to live, you know, not in the city, but they could bargain their way into it as well, like they have in Boston, where they've had residency on the fire department and such. That was a bargained event at one point in their history, so.
And I fully understand that there would be a level of negotiations that would be required with those bargaining units. But again, sending the message to the community that, you know, although it's good practice by our current administration, the council can also stipulate. That would be my only suggestion, you know, take it or leave it. I'm not going to support this, but I would certainly support language to be embedded that would also be the expectation of this body, that any particular open municipal position that is not of a challenge in terms of the bargaining unit also be filled with a Malden resident, hands down. But we see the practice happening. I'm not sure whether or not embedding something doesn't make sure that it happens, just to...
Yeah, I would ask that that not be added to this paper, but that a resolution perhaps be made. You know, I feel, I'll tell you what, that I think I made this known in committee, that I would, if this does pass, I would make a resolution that would go to the school committee, that they go down this same path, because I think what you've had going on in the school system is a clear indication, no matter how well-intentioned people are, of where we're headed if we don't create some solutions to it. And it really says a lot when you are not a stakeholder in any of what's going on here, other than your job, so.
So, to answer my question, again, it was just my comment, but right now, you're looking, you're looking for us to support this particular paper with no additional amendments that I'm speaking to.
That's correct, unless it's a department head that I've missed.
I don't think you did. I see no other lights, so I need a...
Motion to...
Motion to...
In accordance with the committee report.
Motion to amend in accordance with the committee report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nope. Do you want a roll call? Roll call, yeah.
On the amendment?
Yep.
It's the corrected list of department heads.
We forgot about that.
Counsel Anderson.
Right, we corrected the department heads.
Crowe, Dark Angelo, Lucy, Kinnon, Matheson, Murphy, Nester, Spatafora, Altrino, Bucci.
Yes.
Okay, so now. Motion to enroll. Counsel Kinnon's motion to enroll.
On Counsel Kinnon's motion to enroll, roll call.
Counselor Anderson, Crowe, Dark Angelo, Lucy, Kinnon, Matheson, Murphy, Nester, Spatafora, Altrino, Bucci.
Yes. Motion to suspend rules for purposes ordaining. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
And this is on ordained.
On ordained. Roll call for ordaining.
Counselor Anderson, Crowe, Dark Angelo, Lucy, Kinnon, Matheson, Murphy, Nester, Spatafora, Altrino, Bucci.
Yes.
Okay.
It is ordained.
The Standing Committee on Public Property, to whom was referred Paper Number 305, Series of 2012, having considered the same, make the following report. Resolve that the city consider granting easement at 73 Rear Rockingham Ave. Committee recommends that this paper be reported out favorably with the following amendment: that the language be stricken and the following inserted in place thereof. Order that the mayor be authorized to sign an easement in favor of the owners of 73 Rear Rockingham Ave, allowing them to cross a portion of city-owned land known as High Rock to permit connection to the city water and sewer system, providing that no blasting be done on the site, and that all expenses of the easement be borne by the property owners. Counselor Kinnon for the committee.
On Counsel Kinnon's motion to receive the committee report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counsel Kinnon for the paper.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. For those of you who are familiar with the area, there is a house way up in the back on Rockingham. It is currently on a septic system, a septic system that is not compliant with the state, and there is really no way up there to make a septic system that is compliant with the state. So, what the owner of the property has asked was that they, through their attorney, was that they be allowed an easement to go across what we now own, the city owns, in that purchase that we made of High Rock with the pipe underneath the ground, which would bring in the sewer system and the water city, completely at their cost, not at the city's cost. And the committee met tonight, discussed this, and what we would not allow under any circumstance is, one of the main reasons we bought the property, was any kind of blasting. So, they will have to dig it out in the best way possible with a backhoe and get to the city line, which is down the street. So, that's what this is all about.
Thank you, Counsel Kinnon. I see a light. No one? Okay. On Counsel Kinnon's motion to amend in accordance with the committee report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Adopt, on Counsel Kinnon's request for adopting as amended, is it a roll call?
If you'd like.
It's a roll call.
Counselor Anderson, Crowe, Dark Angelo, Lucy, Kinnon, Matheson, Murphy, Nester, Spatafora, Altrino, Bucci.
Yes.
The Standing Committee on Public Property, to whom was referred the issue of rental of public property, having considered the same, make the following report. Committee recommends that off-hours use of the senior center be prohibited without the express permission of the city council, which shall not be unreasonably withheld upon a showing of a valid insurance certificate. Counselor Kinnon for the committee.
On Counsel Kinnon's motion to receive the committee report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counsel Kinnon for the paper.
Madam President, I won't belabor this one. I think everybody knows what this is about, and it would include all city properties, just to protect the city financially. Thank you.
So, the motion on the table is, I'm sorry, we have, do have a light. Counsel Dark Angelo.
Thank you, Madam President. And I'm sure the counselor doesn't want to belabor it, but I do want to be sure to point out to everybody a document that you should have received in your folders. And if you haven't read it, I'd like to read it for your edification. It's from the city charter, and it indicates, "The city council shall have the care and superintendence of the city buildings and the custody and management of all city property, with power to let what may be legally let and to sell, purchase, or hire property, real estate, personal, in the name and for the use of the city, whenever its interest or convenience may be, and their judgment require it." Just for clarification, on another matter that this council has discussed, while it's related, it's not that issue, this is a separate issue, but I think both are applicable to what I just read. So, I would ask everybody to consider that it's this council's power and authority to maintain these city properties, and it's our responsibility, I think, to all of our constituents, to be prudent with that responsibility. And I think, in the opinion of the city solicitors, we've gotten multiple opinion, not from just the city solicitor, but from other city solicitors as well, that operating without such coverage is probably not the best course of action. So, I would encourage everybody to make sure we have the appropriate policies and procedures in place with a separate piece, but more, just as importantly, that goes along with it, make sure we have the appropriate liability coverage... that goes along with it, make sure we have the appropriate liability coverage in place. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Darkangelo. Counsel Matheson.
I understand the need for insurance, and I know the risks that are at stake. I just hope that we continue to look into alternatives to make this senior center accessible to the groups that want to use it, perhaps in the form of some kind of building insurance that would cover the off-hour usage, provided that it's, you know, of some benign, non-dangerous activity. I just want us to keep exploring this. I understand we need this for now to protect us liability-wise, but it's something that we should keep working on, because there's a lot of people depending on access to this building. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel, sorry, Counsel Matheson. Counsel Anderson, and then Counsel Murphy.
Thank you, Madam President. I too am concerned about the problem that this presents for those nonprofit organizations who, in many cases, will not be allowed to use this facility because of the costs associated in the insurance. And that just doesn't sit well with me. I think this is a beautiful building that we have, but much of the reservations that I hear talked about, the liability, for example, the use of it, is probably no different than what we would have in any other building. If, for example, we had, you know, I've heard the discussion about the need for indemnification or insurance to cover in case someone falls, slips and falls, and sues the city. Well, that's not an awful lot different than what would happen if they used our community center. That doesn't, you know, we're not covered for that either. And I'm more concerned about these small groups that do such good work in our city, that we are excluding them from this facility. And for that reason, while I appreciate all the hard work in here, that I won't vote in support of this paper this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Anderson. Counsel Murphy.
Thank you, Madam President. I too am very concerned about what this paper will do to the many organizations in the city who are small, who are nonprofit, who don't have any type of a revenue stream, or if they do have a revenue stream, they immediately give it out to people who need that money. I come from the insurance sector. I understand the need for insurance. However, we're talking about groups who are walking into a building, basically sitting down at a table and having a meeting. We're not talking about groups that are going in playing basketball or actually engaging in physical activity. If a slip and a fall happens in a building, I know this holds harmless, et cetera, et cetera, but normally it's going to go against whoever was negligent in the upkeep of the building. To me, it's no different than having people walk down our sidewalks. If we take good care of our building, and we make sure that our steps and our property are well-kept, the chances of somebody slipping and falling, which truly to me is the basis of, you know, where an incident is going to occur, is nothing more than we encounter every day with people walking in and out of City Hall, walking up and down our streets, crossing our sidewalks, et cetera. To take the few buildings that we have and require insurance policies from those organizations who just truly can't afford them, and who give in kind such good work back to the community. I just struggle with it, and I think we're going down the wrong road on this. And I think at some point, as a city, we need to just step up and say, okay, we accept that obligation. There's certain things you can't do in these buildings, can't have alcohol unless you have a host liquor liability policy. I would put conditions on it like that, where you could have, you know, an issue because of alcohol or some type of activity that's physical. But for just prohibiting people from having a meeting, to me, I don't think it sends the right message to these groups that we are trying to welcome into our community and have them be part of our organization. So for that reason, I cannot support this.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. To my far right, Jim Nestor.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a point of information, again, having been involved in a number of youth sports organizations and youth organizations, majority of them have insurance coverage in some one way or the other. I've been told in the committee meeting that we have in another building, that there is an opportunity for the groups to bind together and come up with coverage, so it would be inexpensive to them. And I can say, with the senior center, if you haven't been in there, within the last week, maybe two weeks, they have put up fencing around where there were some of the trees, actually one of them fell, so they removed them. And they were having issues with people walking through the plant areas and falling. So if you haven't been in there the last two weeks, what they've done is put decker fencing around there, so people would stop kind of going through there and falling. So it is an issue. It's a clear issue. There is a lot of liability. This just makes sense to do it with you. You know, you want to do it or not, it makes sense for everybody to actually do it. And we've seen within the last two weeks, action taken by the senior center because of people falling and issues with that. So this is time to put this in place.
Thank you, Counsel Nestor. Counsel Lucy. Oh, I'm sorry, Altrino.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I was torn with this whole, the whole policy of rental, and, you know, I know the fee structure that was talked about two weeks ago. But, you know, having time to think about it, it's not easy. The fee structure is going to be worked on, and we'll take that up at another meeting. I think the fees are too high, just for the record. When it comes to insurance, I, you know, I asked Mr. Brennan, our Assistant City Solicitor, on his thoughts. He too does feel that there should be some sort of liability insurance, because the city is self-insured. He's an attorney. He's been practicing. I take his advice on that. But I know, for eight years being on the school committee, and Counsel Crowe should take some, you know, congratulatory, because she worked on a policy where we rent the school out, and they're busy, Ms. Iavino and Ms. Crowe. And actually, Counsel Lucy worked on it when he was on the school committee. But they do require insurance, whether they're playing basketball, or having a meeting, serving food, or what have you. And I'm torn. Again, I believe the fee structure is too high when it comes to the insurance. You know, I feel bad. You know, there has to be a way to see if we can group them together, as Counsel Nestor spoke about at the Oak Grove Community Center. They're doing that now. You know, and I think the city can help them in some way, whether it's find an agent for them, or get some information to help them maybe meet with the chair of each of those committees, and saying, okay, we can combine you folks together. It's good for four days a month, or something like that, and the cost will be minimal. I get the insurance for San Rocko. We have no money at all. But we have to have insurance for three days. And so I understand what nonprofits are doing. The money we spend in that's less we give out in scholarships. But all it took was a lawsuit many years ago, and unfortunately, we had to smarten up and get the insurance, because I didn't want my house taken away as the president. So this is a tough one for me. I don't think it will restrict the community, just make us maybe work together more with the mayor's office, and see if we can come up with some other solution for these groups. But on the record, the fees are too high, and I look forward to that discussion when it comes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Altrino.
Madam President, I'm sorry, just a point of clarification. Yeah, in the discussion that we had as a committee, we have a committee at that building, was the discussion of a consortium where they can bind together. We don't have that there now. We don't have a combined group policy for the building. I just want to make sure that's clear. Thank you.
Counsel Lucy.
Thank you, Madam President. And, you know, not to be overdramatic with it, but I can see both sides on this. I can see the side of being in the insurance business, why the reason, you know, you go into someone else's place, you need some type of insurance policy. So, you know, I certainly get that, and I get the fact that you have all these little nonprofits, and, you know, just trying to get a place to meet. So, you know, I'm a little torn myself, because, you know, I want to do the right thing by the nonprofits, but then in the same token, I can see the exposure that the city potentially has. You know, I realize that it's not that, what they're doing in there isn't that active, and, you know, it's not a matter of, like someone said, playing basketball or something like that, which is a lot of truth to that. So, and, you know, this is something I should have checked out on my end, and I, you know, I apologize, I didn't do it, but I should have checked out on my end, if there's such a way to maybe get some type of, you know, coverage for these people under some type of umbrella, which I will do tomorrow. There's a lot of companies out there that do a lot of things, and they can do a lot of creative things. So, you know, I will look that from my end tomorrow, to see if there is a company out there that would, you know, take a bunch of, you know, not a lot of exposure type of liability. Maybe we can come up with some type of insurance coverage that will cover the whole, you know, anyone that's going in for a very reasonable price. So I'll get on that tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lucy. Counsel Darkangelo.
Yes, thank you, for the second time. And I'll defer if anybody else would like to speak for the first time. Thank you. So just to dispel a couple of the things that have been brought up, and, you know, there's a couple of different issues. The first one, I think, is what we were hoping to do, and I'm speaking for the committee, because this did get voted out unanimously, is construct up a set of policies and procedures, along with a liability waiver, call it what you want, insurance piece, both of those to work together. And hopefully, if it worked out well, then apply it to other city buildings. That was the hope. And, you know, in that, I did do some due diligence, and I spoke with members of organizations, from the Masons, to the Elks, to some of the other benevolent groups that own their property. I spoke with some private function hall owners, and all of them indicated to me unequivocally, they have never refused a group. I'll repeat that. Nobody can ever remember ever refusing a group. We spent seven, or eight, or however many millions of dollars on the senior center here, and all we're trying to do is be prudent and protect the city. That's it. That's it. And I really believe for these extracurricular activities, this isn't including the programming that's going on there in the regular course of business. So I would assert that it's different from other buildings such as this one, where we're here conducting regular business, and people come and go, and whatever happens. Yeah, sure, then I understand. This is extracurricular activities. Oftentimes, many of these events are fundraisers. Many of these events are put on by very organized groups who certainly have the capacity. So let's not talk about the small minority of groups that won't have the capacity to be able to qualify here. I think it's very important, and again, not to belabor this, and I'm sorry, but this is the city of Malden. We need to have the appropriate level of, on one end, coverage and liability. And I don't think asking a group, or a representative from a group, to sign a waiver is anything that's extraordinary, and that is, you know, going to turn civic activities in Malden on its head, first. Second thing is, in terms of, you know, what we're trying to do here as a city, having a set of policies and procedures and controls, whether it be within the clerk's office, or the treasurer's office, or the comptroller's office, or with a policy for renting out our space. I do think that it's prudent. I think that the city council hired us, and I feel for my constituents in particular, hired me to be able to say, voted for me to be able to say, you know what, yes, we need to have things in order. Perhaps it's been for nobody's fault, we haven't had those procedures in the past. Now is the time to develop it. We put forward a paper. I think it's a good paper, and I would just ask everybody to support it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Darkangelo. Counsel Murphy.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, when we talk about function halls, Counsel Darkangelo, I mean, I know, or I shouldn't say I know, I believe the Rotary meets at Anthony's. Is that correct? Do they ask you for an insurance policy before you walk in the door? No, because they're charging you a fee for your lunch or your dinner. We're going to charge these people a fee, potentially, that's the next topic of conversation, to be able to access the hall. So, no, I think that we can create a set of procedures and policies around the activities that are going to happen. And for a 12-person meeting, walking into a room, I don't think you need insurance. As I said, the entire city, or has been said tonight, the entire city is self-insured. We can be sued for somebody just walking down a sidewalk, walking in City Hall. The amount of activity that we're talking about this building, that is not, you know, in any active mode per se, is so minute, and yet it is such, it just affects some of these groups so terribly. I hope, Counsel Lucy, that you can come up with a solution from an insurance policy. But until we can really, you know, work through this, I don't really see the huge issue on the liability with slips and falls, especially if there's no alcohol, there's no, any type of games that are being played, or any type of physical activity going on. You know, you're walking in, you're walking out, you're sitting down at a table, you're having a discussion, and you're leaving. You know, anyone can access this, anyone over 50 can access the senior center as it is on a daily basis. You know, if, and by the way, Counsel Nestor, wherever you went, the fencing looks lovely. I was there today. It's actually quite nice. They put in place of the trees. But I just think we're taking this to, you know, a level that we don't need to go to, quite personally. And I do think that we are taking away from the good that these groups are doing, i.e. the All Face Festival that happens at the senior center every year. Now, how are they going to go get a policy? They're not even really a group. You know, it's a meeting of churches. What do we do with people, what do we do with situations like that? There has to be a way for us to say that these groups and organizations give back so much to the city, and the opportunity, you know, for someone to slip and fall, is it there, of course. It's there anyplace. But it's so minute. I just don't, I don't think that we are looking at this in the correct way to sponsor those groups that are going to bring Malden forward, so.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. Counsel, to my right, Counsel Crowe, who waited patiently. Counsel Crowe.
Thank you, Madam President. There are a lot of, you know, moving pieces to this party. I do believe that the insurance rioters, hopefully, I actually looked out on a few myself today, and got some quotes back on the email, that are cheap for an event for a one-day rioter. So, you know, it seems like these things can happen. I do think it needs to change. I'm not really for the fees, if people are going to be buying the rioters for their events. That's one thing. And if it is 12, the building can be very limited in where you can go, while the other places are closed down. You can just have your meeting in the atrium. They're not moving around. They're not cooking dinner. Again, with the larger crowds, I think some of the things that we, I know right now, we're just talking about the insurance rioters, but some of the limiting to 50 people. If we do that, people that are doing fundraisers, and that's what they're trying to bring in, we don't want it to capacity, but, you know, you wonder, it kind of defeats the purpose of them having an event there. And I also think that any event that is there, if it's supposed to be a Malden public building, it's supposed, the event should be for the good of the community, and open to all people, open to all residents. So you are, we're not talking about a wedding, because no one's going to be having their wedding there, and open it up to all people, you know, within constraints, because those are the things that, and if something, not like that, and it's an enclosed meeting, then it's really not for the good of all people in the community, and it's not the right venue. Senior community center is not the right venue. I do think there is some, you know, fine lines we have to walk and figure out, who has what. I really do like the idea of, you know, getting a consortium of nonprofits, with some kind of rioter that can be used. And I think that's a, you know, creative way to look at it. And to find some other places, maybe, you know, we talk a little more with the superintendent, and getting some of the Girl Scouts back into the schools where they, I would think, belong. So to work on that a little bit. They do have after-school programs in all the schools in Malden, so I can't tell why we can't piggyback in some way, shape, or form on those. But I am for the rioter, the rioter part, because I do think we need to protect ourselves. But, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Crowe. Counsel Spatafora.
Thank you, Madam President. And, you know, I've heard, honestly, I thought we were past the insurance binder. I know it was the fees. I think there was a concern about, you know, I think we can always look at the fees. You know, the schools require insurance if you rent the school. If the Malden Little League, I'm told, if they use the fields, they need insurance. So having, you know, this missing cog in the wheel, I think would be really bad for the city council to start that process. If we can get a binder for all these organizations, I think that's the way to do it. I think the insurance, to me, is, I'm not saying it's easy to rectify, but I think it's... essential to what we do. And that should be required for our property, not just that. I'm just going to give you an example of something that came across within literally the last few weeks. There's a new energy efficiency committee that meets once a month in this building. I'm the only member, other than the public properties director, that is from the city council. There's three other members who are residents of the community. We've only had two meetings. The beginning of that conversation is when we wanted to have a meeting, was always after work because of people's schedules. They wanted to meet in this building, everybody had their own schedule, Monday through Friday. I was told, in a very nice way, we are not going to open up this building after hours because of the cost of opening City Hall. It's a five-member group. So we have to meet, which is everybody's fine with it, the third Wednesday of every month, because it's, goes on with the planning board. So we meet at the same time the planning board meets, so they don't have to open the building for us, because we didn't have the option of opening the building for us. I think a way to kind of work past those fees is, if the building's open during the hours, they can meet there, I think, for free, in my opinion. Okay? That's my opinion, but, but there's a caveat to that, too. The second thing is, if you meet after hours, there has to be some type of cost associated with that. My real and great concern here is everybody says, well, the betterment of the community. What I think is good for the community, what Counsel Crowe thinks of the community, are two different things, maybe. And it will come to a point, I can guarantee it, when an organization that we don't agree with, or most of us don't agree with, want to rent that building, and they're going to have all those things there, and the city's going to say, we don't want them there, are they going to say, well, how did they get in that building? I have no idea. So, I don't even just think it's the fees that scares me, I mean, and I think, and I've said this before, Girl Scouts, Zonta, you know, all those organizations, it's a layup. But the problem is, as a city body, when you open up to one, you have to open up to all, and people have said, what do you mean by organizations you don't want? Well, I'm not going to pick on any organization out there, but there are certain types of places in the city of Malden that every council's had either apply for on their ward, or had established in their ward, and they do meetings. And if they come to us and they want to rent that building and pay the price, and it's 20 people, what do we say? Because it might be good for that organization, but it's not good for the city of Malden. And that is my concern, because it is a very good piece of real estate, not only in the structure of the building, but on the location of the building. And that, that's what really frightens me. I mean, I wish we could just write a, you know, you put in there and say, Zonta, Girl Scouts, save me for nothing, whatever, that's fine. But that's why I, I'm just very nervous of this document, and I've been talking to several members over there, you know, on a regular basis, to make this as fair and equitable to everybody, but I just want everybody to realize, you know, I think the insurance binder, in my opinion, it's a layup. I mean, I think everybody agrees that we have to do that for every reason. If the schools require it and the Little League feels required, how can we not have, you know, the senior center requiring? I mean, I'm sure the same thing would be same in this building. If we were going to have a, rent out this hall for somebody, I think we'd probably ask for that, for that insurance rider. So I don't think that's a concern, but, you know, I just think it's, it might not happen now, it might not happen in two years, but it's going to happen in that building. Somebody's going to want to rent that building to do something that we don't agree with, or a couple councils don't, and we can't say no, because that's, that's the mandate. You know, I don't mean to go back to the schools, but the schools were, you know, where were these organizations based? Oh, they're Malden-based, and you find out they're not based in Malden, so is it for the betterment of Malden? No, it was for the betterment of that organization. You know, I'm all for using that property, I'm all for working on the fees, but I think we just have to make sure it's a document that is tight to make sure that we don't use that property in, in a way that wasn't supposed to be. You know, I said this last week, and I don't mean to be mean, but it's called the senior center for a reason. If we build a community building and we want to do it, I'm all for it, let's do it. But I think we have to be very careful how we go down this path, because, you know, I'm being repetitive, but, yeah, the Girl Scouts are easy, the Boy Scouts are easy, you know, the, you know, Chamber Commerce is easy, Malden X is easy, it's an easy one. Everybody here would say the same thing, yeah, it's fine. But there's going to be one group who's going to file an application, and somebody's going to say, no, absolutely not. And you know what's going to happen? They're going to sue us. That's exactly what's going to happen. So, I mean, that's my concern more than anything. I mean, we could use the building, I'm not, I don't think it should be made to be profitable either, you know, make the fees so that it's fair and equitable to the organizations that want to use it. But, you know, this is the, this is the latest new building we have. If we decide to build the City Hall down the road, you know, they might want to rent that, too, so I just think, whatever we set here is a mandate. Learn from the schools' problems that they've had, carry them over to us, and make it so that it's, it's fair. And I know it's easier said than done, but I think we could definitely hammer something out, but, you know, it just makes me, it makes me very leery when they say, for the betterment of the community. I don't know what that means, so, thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Counsel Spatafora. Counselor, I'm sorry, to my left, Counsel Kinnon.
Am I up?
You are.
I did not want to belabor this, but since everybody's had a lot to say, I, I'll say this much, and, and this is in all due respect to Counselor Murphy, but she brought up the fact that Rotary goes into, I think, Anthony's for, you know, free, and, a fee, for a fee, and does not pay insurance, and yet, that's the business that they're in, number one. Number two, it's a private organization, and if somebody falls, it's on the family who owns Anthony's, and they have, and they have insurance. The city of Malden, if somebody falls and splits their head open in the senior center from one of these groups, that we favor, for whatever reason, to Counsel Spatafora's reason, reasoning is, oh, we like this group, we don't like this group, this group, oh, they're poor, they can't afford it, they don't have to have it. But Counselor Murphy, or Counsel Kinnon, is deciding that the city of Malden will pick up that insurance, not some private insurer, but the city of Malden, meaning you, the taxpayer, will pick it up if we have a $2 million liability lawsuit, because we took the risk, it's coming back at everybody out there who we represent, because we're self-insured, self-insured. So, I don't think it's up to us to determine who, who can and who can't afford insurance. I think it's up to us to protect the taxpaying people, and to Counselor Crowe's point, if it's not something that's open to all, where everybody can come from the city, then indeed, there's got to be some fee and there's got to be some insurance, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Kinnon. To my left, no, I have a light, nope, to my right, Counsel Matheson.
So I think there's got to be some kind of solution. We're not talking about big groups, we're talking about the smaller groups, and we all agree that we'd love to, you know, continue for them to have access to the building. We're just worried about liability. As we respond to a few things that were said around the table, Counsel Kinnon, we don't face millions of dollars of liability if someone gets hurt. You know, states enjoy sovereign immunity, and they can waive that to allow citizens to sue the government for redress. Massachusetts has done that, but we're capped at $100,000 of liability. So that's for a wrongful death, and I know you're going to come up with some scenario, okay, and I want to hear it. That's, that's what all this is for, and we can actually talk about this after the meeting as well, but the government can also procure insurance. So we can buy insurance to insure against these contingencies, and whatever that premium is, we can pass that cost down to the groups for a small user fee, or whatever it might be, you know, make, make it commensurate with the risk. But I think that's the direction we need to be looking in, you know, telling a small group of people that, you know, paint pictures and put them up in windows, that they have to come up with insurance policies, it might be prohibitively expensive. So, I, that's where I want us to keep looking, and I just wanted to put that out there.
Counsel Lucy, for a point of information.
Just a point of information, that the city is, in fact, self-insured, but they do have a policy for liability in their buildings, and the liability limit's a million, three million, so, if, if the self-insured part of the city, yeah, we can, we'll only pay up to $100,000, but they actually have, they do have an insurance policy, they pay that covers every single building they have, and including that is liability, and it's a million, three million.
Thank you, Counsel Lucy. Counselor Darkangelo.
Yeah, you know, I wish we had the city, so, thank you for letting me speak again, and not to beat this, but I wish we had the city solicitor here, because I think there's a couple of misnomers that are out there, particularly, they can sign the waiver, they don't want to have insurance, sign the waiver. Sign the waiver that releases us of all liability. Sign the waiver, right? That's the first thing. The second thing is, Counselor, who I'm sure appears in front of judges all the time, let's face it, if the judge sees that there was nothing, the judge is going to say, sorry, city of Malden, you're out of luck. If the judge sees that the city had at least attempted at insurance, at liability forms, at waiver forms, at policies and procedures, then he's going to be able to say to the other group, hey, you know what you were getting into. That's all we're trying to say here. We're just, we're not trying to adnify 100%, that's not going to happen, we get it. We're just trying to put something out there, we're trying to run the city in an orderly manner, and I think it's prudent to ask for three forms. We presented the forms in the committee, the committee unanimously, voted them unanimously several weeks ago, the city solicitor spent all summer working on them, got input from all the other communities around here. I think they're good documents. We're asking three forms, sign three forms, that's it, it shouldn't be a big deal. I would ask that when this is voted, it be taken by a call of the ayes and nays. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Darkangelo. Counsel Kit, I'm sorry, Counsel Anderson, Counsel Kinnon.
Yes, sorry, I do need to address Counsel Matheson on this $100,000 limit. A $100,000 limit is, and I'm sure you're an excellent attorney, I'm positive you are, you're very, but what a reasonable person would do is a civil matter, and would a reasonable person require insurance? And so that you can go beyond that $100,000, there are cases all over the Commonwealth where they got more than $100,000, and the cities and towns actually settled because of not having due care, reasonable care. And so, I invite you to look that up. I am familiar with some right here in this community, so, thank you.
Counsel Kinnon, I see no more lights, so, from the chair, I too don't want to be repetitive of some of the comments made tonight, but there's no doubt, I mean, I think we're all very cognizant of the fact that our smaller groups are not-for-profit folks, the folks who are molding and shaping the young minds of, whether it be Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, I've kind of, with the phrase, has been there, done that, for years, did that process with my young men, and did it for several years out of my home. Never thought that there was a public building to even be, to access. The fact of the matter is, the city has, has that available space. Obviously, we've grown over the years and built out some of that space, upgrading the school system, certainly building fabulous centers like the senior center. You know, in terms of the fact that this is almost a two-part conversation, the piece that I can get my hands around is, is a reasonable cost that is tied to an insurance rider. That being said, you know, when Counsel Lucy mentioned earlier, or Counsel Nester talked about bundling, you know, I think, we don't have that information tonight, I don't know what that number looks like, I think it may be much more manageable for groups that do come together, but, you know, I certainly feel strongly that we've got to do the right thing, and that we've got to be consistent. So I do hope that the information that the council will be provided, whether it be through our own efforts or folks like Counsel Lucy to my left, who's willing to look at that, you know, that whatever type of rider it is, if it's affordable and it gets to the crux of the goal we have, then we would not want to be so close-minded that it has to be of a certain value, but that it may in fact be able to meet the needs that these smaller organizations certainly have. You know, when we talk about the schools, and we talk about sporting-type events, they're larger organizations, these are not, as Counsel Murphy points out, just a handful of people walking into a building to have a focus group discussion, or a small group of men or women working with a small group of kids. So, that being said, I certainly do want to express that I, I am in favor of a rider, but more importantly, hope that that, along those lines, we can find something that is financially achievable. And I certainly, as we get into the policies, procedures, fees, will certainly absolutely not support any fees from those folks who are doing what I consider to be incredibly in-kind work on behalf of our residents. I do have a question for Counsel Nester, though. I couldn't hear all of the dialogue or the deliberation in committee tonight. Can you explain how the Oak Grove Community Center operates? Do you have rates, schedules, contracts? I, I was just hearing bits and pieces of it. Or do you have folks utilize that building, that public building, for some type, some type of format of in-kind work? How's that, how does the Oak Grove Center work? I'm curious, that's all. I'm sorry.
Thank you. It's, it's a little bit different, much different than what we're talking about here. We need to remember that this is a senior center, it's not a community center. The sole purpose of this building was to get them out of a basement, in this building, a dungey basement, and put them in some lively space, so. What we did a few years ago is we put together a building committee, and we asked the city solicitor for input on how it should be made up and the rules and regulations of that committee. What we do is we try to run it at a zero cost, so that there are groups that are using it, almost every single one of them, some more than the other, donate labor time, things like that, to roll it through. The majority of the groups that are in there, that I've spoken to, either have insurance through their main organization, and again, I would say that committee, the committee meeting that we had, there was one individual in an arts group, it said that you could, you know, as a consortium, you know, get some coverage that way, but, you know, have a number of people in their umbrella policy, like Counsel Lucy said, so, that's kind of how we run things there, a little bit different. But again, let's, let's remember, the sole purpose of this building is a senior center, six or $7 million that we put into, we need to cover costs, I know we're shooting off a little bit, this is only the insurance binder part of it, so, we need to cover ourselves, we need to protect ourselves. It's a huge investment the city put into it, there are issues in that building, it just happened a few weeks ago, where people do fall, people do get hurt, things happen. We need to cover ourselves again. We're self-insured, so that all comes back to us as well, so. I know we're having a discussion on the rest of it going forward, but let's not forget the end result, and how fabulous that building is, and how fantastic that building is, and where the people were prior to that, so we need to cover ourselves as a city in that building. Thank you.
I do, I understand the senior center, and I understand the importance of protecting the investment, I understand the importance of the rider. I'm just trying to make sure that we're all on the same page, that a public building is a public building, in terms of the fact that it sounds like, right now, the Oak Grove Community Center, a public building, does have some type of structural format, as we talk about the senior center contract, or the senior center agreement, or the needs of that, being the template to go forward with our, our public facilities, our municipal buildings that are being accessed by the public. I would just want to be on record as saying that they all should be treated the same, that there aren't, even though there is, there are, there, things have been carved out. School Department does their piece, which I think was mentioned earlier, that we would be circulating, circling back to those folks at one point, but I, I don't, to be honest with you, don't know all of the public facilities, we've got a teen center coming online, I mean, there's, there's more to what we're doing that could have a larger impact, so, at the end of the day, I just wanted clarity, I couldn't, couldn't hear all of the conversations, I thought I was hearing.
This, all these votes will have a ripple effect on all the buildings.
But I'm on board with the insurance rider, certainly won't be on board with the fees that are being suggested in the content of the agreement, but I do want to make sure I'm on board with all we're saying. If it's good for Harry, it's good for Susan, and we got to have equity here, and not that we're treating one particular building that we manage as a public entity any different than another. If we have folks in there without riders, it would be expected that the concept would be the same, and that is simply just my opinion. I have lights. Where do I want to start? Counsel Lucy.
I'm just going to be real quick. Teen enrichment center.
Sorry.
And what we plan on doing, we are going to get insurance to cover our contents and liability. Thank you.
Thank you. To my, Counsel Darkangelo.
Thank you, again. Just a question, and this would be directed to our clerk. Last week, I believe, we suspended the rules to, to separate out events that were already happening, because I think there's, there was some confusion in the subcommittee, or I shouldn't say confusion, but a supposition in the subcommittee, where the subcommittee clearly indicated that we didn't want the building
that we didn't want the building rented until either the policies and procedures were in place or the liability piece was in place. Now somehow those have been separated, but whatever the case may be. So my question is, where do we stand? After we leave here tonight, where do we stand? Are they going to be renting the building or are they going to not be renting the building?
This is a different question, Madam President.
But to me, that's, it's related.
It's off the question. We should, we should address the question that we're on, which is strictly insurance.
Strictly on the insurance, correct.
Insurance. And that includes insurance, by the way, at the community center and any other building we have. It's not, it is not just on the senior center.
Right. Just, again, my comments were related to how my, related to my opinion, and that is, I'm assuming, I don't want to assume, that we're not taking into account every public facility will have the same approach. And if there's, if there's an insurance rider requested of the senior center, it will be requested of the Oak Grove Center at all times. And I, just for a point of clarification, that's all. Because earlier tonight, when we first started speaking, one of your comments were about what your motion was in regards to all public buildings. And again, it was difficult hearing from that first row where we have some residents sitting tonight and the dialogue going on here. I had to turn to the clerk because what's written in the motion is that, and she clarified it, this, the motion reads the senior center. And I want to make sure that we're talking about.
There were two motions, Counselor Kenan. And one, you said you did not want to report out. You directed the city solicitor to contact the directors of all buildings. You told me specifically that you did not want that to pointed out. It was being done on the authority of the committee based on the charter. And your contention, in my minutes, is that we did not require a vote of the city council to enforce the charter.
That's correct.
The second motion was Counselor Darkangelo's motion, which he asked to be reported out, which is, which was a reiteration of a motion that was made in the meeting of June 5th, specifically relative to the senior center.
Which, I believe I still have the floor. Thank you. I'm happy to yield to all my colleagues. Thank you. But, so, I don't believe it's out of order. I believe I need to get clarity on that to understand then what the implications of my vote will be. I think that's in order. I mean, so, because right now, I thought that everybody, that they had basically canceled everything with one or two exceptions that we made. Is that accurate or not? I don't know. That's my question.
We gave 14 days from two weeks ago.
Okay, and the 14 days is up. So what's going to happen as we go forward? That's my question.
That depends. As of.
Yeah, as the person who chaired that meeting, let me respond to that. We directed at that meeting that after, with the, as we went by those exceptions, those that were already booked for the couple of weeks, beyond that, there wouldn't be any more allowing renters or users in until we squared this away.
Is that clear?
That was, that's what I thought. That's what I thought. So to me, that affects how I'm going to vote here on this particular piece. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Darkangelo. To my right, Counselor Matheson.
Just want to point out, the groups have been using this for, what, two and a half years? Have there been any claims filed? Five years, I'm hearing from Director Ron Cox. Have there been any claims filed? No, I mean, you can't ignore that, right? This is something that even if you were going to insure a building, they'd say, "How many incidents have you had in the past? What are the group activities? How many people are going to be using it?" I mean, these are all things that factor into risk. If I had the resources of the city, I'd say, "Look, self-insurance isn't even a bad way to go. Let's set up an enterprise fund of user fees to indemnify ourselves against a $100,000 claim." Doesn't sound that outlandish to me. But I'm still in favor of looking into insurance policies to cover these groups, our own building insurance policy, so that the city is protected and the groups maintain access. That's it. I don't want to belabor the process anymore than it already has been.
Thank you, Counselor Matheson. I have no more lights. And let's move the question.
And shall I?
Please repeat it.
Yes.
We're going to repeat it.
It's that off-hours use of the senior center be prohibited without express permission of the city council, which shall not be unreasonably withheld upon showing of a valid insurance certificate.
Does it?
That off-hours use of the senior center be prohibited without the express permission of the city council, which shall not be unreasonably withheld upon showing of a valid insurance certificate.
Everybody okay?
Counselor Darkangelo has asked for a roll call.
Counselor Darkangelo has asked for a roll call.
Counselor Anderson, Crowe, Darkangelo, Lucy, Kenan, Matheson, Murphy, Nestor, Spatafora, Altrino, Bucci.
Yes.
So it passes nine to two.
Passes nine to two.
Believe it or not, the last thing we have is paper number 357, tabled until this meeting. A use, which is the proposed use and rental policy for the senior center.
And that's paper.
386 was the committee report. 337 is the mayor's version. 386 is the committee version.
So, on Counselor, Counselor Nestor.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the paper as written. Thank you.
We haven't.
As recommended by the public property committee. No, it's tabled.
So first, first set of housekeeping is to first ask folks on Counselor Nestor's motion, receive the, no, to untable the paper, 386. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Table, it's untabled. Next order of business on this.
And I believe Counselor Nestor was trying to make a motion.
Counselor Nestor.
Adopt the recommendation of the public property committee. The public property committee's recommendation.
All right. So Counselor Nestor's motion is to adopt the recommendation from the public properties paper committee and its paper as it was provided to us two weeks ago. There has been no changes forwarded to us at the, since that time. But I do have a light. Counselor Darkangelo.
Thank you. I would assert that we wouldn't be where we are now if we hadn't done, hadn't tabled this a couple of weeks ago. I think what we did a couple of weeks ago was good. We worked on it over the summer. The city solicitor contributed a lot. The administration contributed a lot to it. Everybody was a consensus, and I'm not sure why it got bogged down. We wouldn't be in this position now. And instead, we'd just be doing fine-tuning on pieces such as fee schedule and in-kind contributions, which everybody agrees, we want to get the Girl Scouts in there and get all the good groups in there. I agree, I think everybody agrees, that's not the issue. So, sorry to belabor it, but yes, I think we should pass this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Darkangelo. But again, I wasn't present two weeks ago and I do have to ask for an indulgence to speak. But what I recollected from what I watched as local cable ran it for us to be mindful of it, it actually been, it has run a few times. I think there was a significant important, importance behind letting this sit for two weeks because it is a significant decision that most people are actually faced with making tonight. And we've heard a lot of dialogue related to just the insurance rider. And we are now engaging ourselves into the next piece of the business of the operation of the senior center. But I do think that in referencing the emotional side of this decision and the challenges that some of the, some of our peers were faced with, I think there may not have been more, more comments forwarded at that time, but there certainly has been more, more time spent reviewing this document, reviewing what's been proposed to us from the public properties department, I mean, committee, as well as the content of the dialogue last week. So I would hope that two weeks from that moment has had its silent weight of value for us as a team, so. Sorry again to have taken myself out of order, but the lights are here and I'd like to, Counselor Kenan?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I also support the paper as it came out of committee. I understand some may have amendments. However, I would ask the council president, have you had any feedback in the last two weeks?
I have not. Except, excuse me, I have not had anything officially provided to me. There has been dialogue related to fees.
Okay, so now the public.
So I think I'm going to allow the body of folks tonight to speak to that.
Yeah.
They can share their thoughts that they've shared with me and I will with you as well.
I would hope that you would. I think that this is a good exercise and that the city will be able to see how 11 people can come to good decisions this way rather than in a committee format in which the council was set up for 100-plus years, for a good reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kenan. Counselor Altrino.
Could you, I haven't seen the paper again since two weeks. That includes the fee structures. Is that correct, Madam President?
That's correct. Item 3, I'm not sure if you want to read this. I think, I think, well, his question is it related to the fee structure. The fee structure appears to have remained the same.
Yes.
Okay, that was the point. Thank you.
Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Madam President. One amendment that I would like to make to the paper is I would like to limit the amount of time that one group can use the senior center. I totally agree with Counselor Nestor that it is a senior center. And I don't think we want to turn it into something that it's not. You know, we, it can be used as a meeting room, but I don't think that it should become home to a particular group for, you know, weekly meetings or bi-weekly meetings. I would like to see us put some type of caveat in there that it can be used for an event or it can be used maybe for one meeting per month by any individual group. But we do, I think, need to limit the amount of times that we don't have any one or two groups taking over the entire facility. Thank you.
So Counselor Murphy, on that point, item 2 under the pre-meeting or event section of the paper states that it says twice a month. What is your recommendation?
Once a month. Okay, so you want to amend it from twice a month to once a month?
Need a second.
Counselor Matheson. Do you want to take them?
It must work out more, other than more.
Hasn't exactly.
Her motion was to. Her motion was to change it from twice a month to once. I'm sorry, I thought I heard you say second. Do I have a second on this? I'll, yeah. Second inside, Counselor Altrino.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, let's do them as we're making the change. So on Counselor Murphy's motion to amend the paper, item number 2, that reflects under user that the, a group may not use the facility more than once a month. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This should not be difficult.
Opposed.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, so we, do we want to be on record as, all in record?
But, but those, but those have it.
So we want a roll call. I want a roll call.
Counselor Anderson, Crowe, Darkangelo, Lucy, Kenan, Matheson, Murphy, Nestor, Spatafora, Altrino, Bucci.
Yes.
So.
It passed.
Six that time. It passed.
That amendment passed. Any other comments or amendment suggestions? I'm sorry, Counselor Kenan, you are wrong.
Yes, could I ask that, I don't think the solicitor's here, but that the amendment we just passed go to the solicitor because I think it may not be legal. It's discriminatory to say that. If it's open for rental, it's open for rental. You can't say, "Oh, you can't rent it this time." If the space is open for rental, somebody comes forward and says they want to rent it, then you can't say, "You can't rent it."
It's a policy.
It's better, everyone.
I would like the solicitor to look into it. I don't think it's legal.
Okay. So then, he's making a motion to have the city solicitor review.
Counselor Kenan is making the motion to have the city solicitor review the, yes, the, the most recently, the vote just taken on that amendment on a roll call.
Counselor Anderson, Crowe. The amendment.
Yeah, to ask the city solicitor, is it?
Yes. Darkangelo, Lucy, Kenan, Matheson.
A yes vote sented to the solicitor?
Yes. Murphy.
No.
Nestor, Spatafora, Altrino, Bucci.
Yes.
So it's eight to three.
So that was eight to three to go to the city solicitor. It was just the amendment.
Correct.
Procedure.
With the amendment ending, we can't vote on the paper.
Correct. We're tabling, we've had a table and a second to a table and motion on this.
Don't need a second to a table.
Okay.
Turns to me, turn to me.
Yeah.
I think it has to be tabled.
I agree.
Okay. Table for two weeks?
Yes, I think that would be an appropriate timing, get the answer. We are recommending that we table this for two weeks. Next week is going to be busy.
Yeah.
Counselor Anderson.
Yes.
Crowe, Darkangelo, Lucy, Kenan, Matheson, Murphy, Nestor, Spatafora, Altrino, Bucci.
Yes.
So nine to two, it's tabled.
Nine to two is tabled for two weeks.
It's been a long night.
And the docket is clear.
The docket is clear, but I have lights on. So I'll start on my father left.
Who just took my favorite.
Counselor Kenan?
Oh, actually, that was, I was trying to say something.
Madam.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Madam President, I'm just thinking of something late and I apologize. It's nothing to do with fees or use, I promise. I would just like to have something there miscellaneous, if it's possible. Again, if you want the city solicitor to look at it, where it says if there's a conflict with the city, obviously, they wouldn't be able to rent it to a user or a user. I would like some language there that if we had to use the building for an emergency and it was rented out or used by somebody else, we can, we can have them leave the property. And what I mean by emergency, somebody would say, "Well, it's an emergency. They're not going to go." My point is, say we need to use that building for shelter, somebody lost heat, but meanwhile, it was rented out for a bazaar or a fear. I would say, "We need to use that building in the event or any likelihood we could, we could kick that organization out for the time being."
It's been tabled.
Oh. I'll bring it in two weeks. All right, everybody, think about it.
I'm told the docket is clear. Personal privilege to my left, Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to invite the residents of Ward 5 to our annual Halloween party, which is going to be held Sunday, the 28th, at 4:00 PM at the Forestdale School. There'll be flyers coming out through the ward shortly, but we hope you'll bring all your little ghosts and gobblins out for a great afternoon and a wonderful candy parade. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Madam President. Some of us, including members from my Ward 7 Association, I saw Counselor Darkangelo there as well, attended a Columbus Day breakfast in Revere on Columbus Day. The city of Revere, I guess, in.
The city of Revere, I guess, in good standing, wants to reinstitute their Columbus Day parade. And, and I think it was a, a good showing of people coming out. I'm sure Counselor Doc Angelo and myself wanted to support that, because we just love parades and glad to see Revere doing that, and, and hope that that's kind of an inspiration for us here in Malden to, to do more with the parade activity that we do. And I love a parade. Second thing I wanted to say that, just a reminder to all of our citizens that we've got a very important election coming up in, in a few weeks, on November sixth. The, the elections that are so important to everyone, that right to vote has been hard fought for, and I just encourage all the voters to get out and vote for the candidates of your choice. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Counselor Doc Angelo.
Thank you, Madam President. And I too echo the distinguished counselors' ideas. It was a great Columbus Day breakfast that we went to, and I think something that maybe we can even replicate here in Malden. They pulled together a great committee, it was a packed hall, they must've had a couple hundred, a few hundred people. And we, we have something to learn from that, and that, I think that's important takeaway. And further building off your vote point, I believe, Madam Clerk, tomorrow is the last day to register to vote. So anybody who can get out and register to vote, do so. It's very important election. There's races up and down the ticket, so everybody get out there and take part. So, it was a very robust debate tonight. Unfortunately, we couldn't get it resolved. Hopefully, we'll get everything resolved in a couple of weeks. I, not to go backward, but I think, you know, one of the reasons why I wanted to vote the paper two weeks ago was because I wanted to avoid going periods of time without people, without groups being able to rent the senior center. So unfortunately now, we're in that spot. So to me, we should have an urgency to get this done as soon as possible. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Doc Angelo. Counselor Altrino.
Thank you, Madam President. Malden had a busy weekend last weekend, and I was privileged to be at a few events. First of all, on Saturday, the Italian American Citizen Club celebrated their seventy-fifth anniversary. Speaker DeLeo was there to give us congratulations. Congressman Mackey took us Malden nineteen fifty-four, and his speech was fantastic. But kudos to the mayor, who did his entire speech and citation in Italian. Thanks to the translation services of Mrs. Luis. So, on Sunday, I was at the Malden High School Hundred and Twenty-Fifth Alumni Reception, although I'm not alum, I went in honor of my father, who was. And that group is growing, and they did, under Dr. Holland, they did a fantastic job. And it, it was just a pleasure to be there and to be invited. So, thank you for everything that you do. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Altrino. Counselor Matheson or Counselor Nester?
I hadn't planned on speaking, but I'll mention something. On October twenty-fifth, Tricap is having their annual Oktoberfest, catered by Carl's Kitchen, genuine German brass band. It's at the Irish American. Should be a great time for anyone interested in that sort of thing. I heard the Italian Citizens Club get mentioned for their event on Saturday. I was at the Club Italia, another Malden Italian club, had their annual event at the Irish American, ironically, on Saturday. It was a great event, great dinner. That's all I wanted to mention this time. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Matheson. Counselor Nester?
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to give a couple congratulations out to a couple of youth groups here. A few years ago, Malden Youth Hockey had to combine with East Boston, and part of that is an invitation every year to what they call the Mayor's Cup Tournament. It's an absolutely fantastic tournament. As the kids progress through the tournament, they play at rinks like BU, they play at Northeast, and in the championship games, they're at BC on the big ice. And Malden had three champions this year, the Might's, the Squirts, and the Peewees, all our Mayor's Cup champions. So it's a fantastic tournament. Congratulations to them. Also, our youth cheerleaders, two teams are now GBL champs too, so I want to congratulate them. It's a fantastic opportunity, and I want to wish my friend Sally O'Malley a happy fiftieth birthday. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Nester. Counselor Crowe.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. There's a few things coming up. Last week was a very busy week, but on Friday, the nineteenth, the February PTO will be having an international food festival, starts at six in the cafeteria. It's a, really a great event. They, the kids do a lot of work, they're bringing a lot of food from all over the country, all over many countries. So I hope people want to come down and enjoy that. On Wednesday is the Coleman Walk, and the YWCA will be walking the five K for the Coleman Walk for the Cure. There's also going to be at Belrock Cemetery at ten thirty in the morning on Saturday. The Historical Society is doing a little sort of tour about some of the people that are in Belrock Cemetery, so you're all welcome to come visit. And don't forget the resident parking sticker, meeting the third and final one, let's get this right, on February, I mean, at, on February, at the Ferryway at seven o'clock, Monday night, the twenty-second, in the auditorium. I'll send out a notice. And I hope everybody can come. And don't forget that the Mayor's Bowling Tournament is this Thursday. So, a lot of events. Thank you.